Okay, I will call to order the Roseville Board of Commissioners work session. This is May 20th, 2025. Just want to thank everybody in attendance that come out tonight. Appreciate you coming out. We've got a few items on the agenda tonight to consider. Campo Wake Transit Plan update, we're going to see that. The fiscal year 2526 proposal budget presentation, our manager's budget will be seen tonight. And Main Street project update, Eric's going to give us that. And it looks like we do have a request from attorney for a closed session. Four items on the agenda, so unless there's opposition, we will proceed. I don't hear opposition to the agenda. Okay, let's proceed then. First item is Campo Wake Transit Plan update. Ben Howell is here with Stephanie, and you guys, you guys take it off.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Apologize, we had a little bit of technical difficulty getting everything together, but thank you for having me here. And I'm gonna run through some information on our draft 10-year investment strategy for the Wake Transit Plan. So tonight in the presentation, I'll provide a brief introduction overview of the Wake Transit Plan itself, provide overview of the state of the plan, which is some work we've been doing, we did last year to see how the plan has grown. And then I'll introduce our draft 10-year investment strategy.
Ben, I'm not sure if all the commissioners know. You're not? Maybe introduce yourself, introduce what you do at Campo, and just a little brief introduction of yourself.
Sorry about that. My name is Ben Howell. I'm the Wake Transit Program Manager for Campo. As you may or may not know, Campo is one of three lead agencies for the Wake Transit Plan. There's Campo, Go Triangle, and Wake County. Campo is the lead agency for really the planning and a lot of the program management aspects of the plan. Go Triangle primarily is the tax district administration, the financial agent for the plan. So Campo is in charge of maintaining the plan, and we update the plan regularly, the 10-year vision plan regularly to make sure that we are keeping up with everything that's going on, recognizing the improvements that have been made, and planning for the future years as well. So tonight in the presentation, we'll go through the overview of the plan itself. We'll go over the state of the plan, where we've come since 2017, introduce the draft 10-year investment strategy that we've developed for moving into the next 10 years, and then the next steps. So the Wake Transit Plan is a revenue stream for public transportation investment. It was approved by the referendum, was approved by the voters in 2016, and we started collecting the transit sales tax in 2017. And the new transit service, we were able to actually start also in 2017. So this plan, the initial plan, was adopted in late 2016 and was used as part of that referendum package to show the voters what would be, what services would be increased and what we would fund with the revenue. So as I already mentioned, the Wake Transit Plan's updated every four years on a cycle that closely matches the region's metropolitan transportation plan, which is a regional multimodal plan for the Campo area as well as the Triangle West area. The Wake Transit Plan initially, as was on the last slide, includes four big moves. And so we have retained those four big moves through the first update that was done back in 2021 time. And again, we are retaining those for this update as well. The Transit Plan establishes priorities and investment direction for the 10-year period, and it's built on community and stakeholder input, and includes financial and technical data about performance and outcomes. The initial Wake Transit Plan was adopted in 2016 and covered the 10 years from 2016 to 2017. It was developed with significant engagement, participation, with over 17,000 public interactions over the course of the planning period. And it achieves the four big moves built with strategies, recommendations. In that plan, the initial plan included the commuter rail from Durham to Garner, four bus rapid transit routes, north, south, east, and west, introducing the community funding area program, ensuring connections from suburbs Raleigh and Cary, and introducing longer hours and more days of bus service, as well as more frequent bus service. The first update of the plan was adopted in 2021 and covered the time from 2021 to 2030. Again, that plan, even though it was during the COVID time period, we still managed to get roughly 12,000 interactions through in-person and online engagement. And that plan primarily updated the strategies, recommendations, and updated the financial information to go out in additional three years to 2030. It kept all the projects pretty much in as they were, updated some cost assumptions, and also added expansions of the bus rapid transit network from Garner down towards Clayton and from Cary out towards Research Triangle Park. So as we began developing this update of the Wake Transit Plan, it was important to understand the trade-offs. Understand that the Transit Plan's ambitious, and it takes on several major projects at a time, including commuter rail, bus rapid transit, new vehicles, operating maintenance facilities, transit centers, bus stop sidewalks, bike paths, regional fare system, new technology, as well as all the additional service. So the reason we update the plan every four years is we continue to have changing transit demand in a growing region. The map on the left on the screen is the 2020, what we call the composite demand map. The darker colors indicate more transit demand based on a number of factors. On the right side of the screen is a 2040 expected composite demand map. And as you can see, there are several corridors that begin to really show with that bright red that shows more transit demand in the region. So just to, you know, close up here on this introduction, the Wake Transit Plan, luckily, we've been very lucky with it. The revenues have remained consistently strong. It has raised nearly $750 million through 2023, and we're expected to raise another $700 million to $1 billion over the next 10 years through 2035. So the purpose of this plan update has really been, what are the transit priorities and the region's transit priorities for the next 10 years? So as we began this update process, we had two update periods, or engagement periods, Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One was spring of last year, where we focused on choices, trade-offs, and priorities. Really, we were asking the public at that point to just give us their high-level priorities for transit. We did that through an online survey that really let folks design their own transit system. Essentially, we gave them a budget and gave them a number of transit improvements that they could choose to fund, but each of those improvements costs a certain amount of money. And with the limited budget, they had to pick their top priorities. That we then used to move into our second phase of engagements this past winter. And in that phase, we really focused down to three questions. One, confirming that we are postponing commuter rail to invest in regional rail, at least for the time being, developing BRT between Raleigh and Durham to meet those regional needs that the commuter rail would have satisfied. And then looking at whether we should serve more people or serve more places first, not an either-or option, but really, which one should we focus on funding first? So with Phase One survey, what we found was that, you know, the public told us regional connections are important regardless of mode, and rail projects, especially commuter rail, continue to be prioritized. When we dug into those responses a little bit further and looked at transit riders versus non-transit riders, what we found out is that transit riders really want better bus service, more frequency, longer hours, are less interested in commuter rail, and care about regional service. Whereas non-transit riders continued to say that they cared about commuter rail as well as town-to-town connections and regional connections. So with the Phase Two that we finish up back in January, we had an online survey that asked those three questions, plus asked for some demographic information. We held 24 pop-up outreach events throughout the county, including, I believe, at least one here. We also had five partner presentations to councils and other boards throughout the county. We had advertisements on social media. We worked with our Spanish partners over at K-Pasa Media to make sure that we were hitting the Spanish and Hispanic population. We also use the rider apps that are out there to do some, push some information out through that. We also held four focus groups with mobility human service providers, ADA riders, educational institutions, and then just transit riders in general. And then we also talked to our stakeholders, which I believe Mayor Curran, you may have been, I think you're a member of our stakeholder group, to talk to them about what we heard through the engagement and also hear what their priorities are. So the next few slides are really the information that we were providing to the public through Phase Two. So the first one was talking about investment in regional rail. What we heard was that 76% agree with the approach that we've proposed, which is to remove the focus on commuter rail and instead focus on regional rail. And when we say regional rail, we're talking about really the existing rail service that's already out there and the planned rail service that's already funded, which would primarily be the Amtrak service, the Carolinian, the Piedmont, as well as the planned S-line service that'll run up to Wake Forest. That S-line service is scheduled to start sometime around 2030. So, you know, we wanted to, part of it was education to remind the public that we do have a lot of train service already. We can build on that instead of trying to build a new system. And we generally got agreement from the public that that was a good approach based on the information that we provided about the commuter rail being very expensive, very difficult to construct, and would take longer than we expected. Next, we talked to the public about the idea of connecting Raleigh and Durham with the bus rapid transit. As you can see, 70% of the public agreed that that's a good idea. There was some questions and confusion about exactly what bus rapid transit is and what it would look like. So we realized we needed to provide some more education and information as we move forward with this. And there were some concerns we heard at outreach events that BRT wouldn't solve the Raleigh to Durham problem. Essentially, if you put a bus on I-40, it's not going to go any quicker than the cars. We do have plans to try and ensure that the buses can run at speed along I-40 even when the cars are stopped. So that would certainly be part of the project. And that's part of the information, education that we will have to work on as we move this project forward. Finally, we talked about the serve more people first or serve more places first. And it was nearly 50/50 with serving more places slightly out, slightly ahead of serving more people. However, when we broke it down by transit riders versus non-transit riders, transit riders wanted to work on serving more people first. Not everyone liked the trade-off, but again, they understood it. And there was a talk at public outreach events about desire to expand regional access without having to transfer in Raleigh or Cary. And then again, existing bus riders were more interested in serving people first, which really meant investing in the existing bus network and increasing frequency. So how did we use all of that information and public comment and feedback to develop our 10-year draft investment strategy? So we are looking right now, again, over the next 10 years, we expect our projected revenues to be approximately $3.3 billion. That includes some existing revenues as well as new revenues. And as you can see on the chart there, a majority of that, a large portion of that, is a half-cent sales tax. There's some federal funding, long-term bond proceeds are also, are the other two big sources. So again, 90% of the funds are from sales tax, long-term bond proceeds, and federal funds, with about 10% remaining being equaling around $330 million. We do and have identified potential challenges with funding assumptions for two revenue sources. That's the vehicle rental tax revenue and the Wake Transit fare box revenue. The fare box revenue, we had stopped, many of our, the providers in Wake County have stopped charging fares during the COVID pandemic. Two of them, Go Triangle and Go Raleigh, began charging fares again last year. Go Cary continues to stay fare-free. And so we have not started pulling that fare revenue back into the Wake Transit Plan as we had it before the pandemic. We will be meeting with our, as a technical group later this fall to talk about that and figure out a process for whether we're going to get that fare revenue back into the Transit Plan or not. And if so, how are we going to do that? And how are we going to ensure equity across all providers? The vehicle rental tax revenue is an issue that the three lead agencies are currently working through. A couple of years ago, Go Triangle notified the Campo and Wake County that they wanted to retain the entire portion, the entire vehicle rental tax revenue. And Campo and Wake County have really disagreed with that thought. And so there's been a lot of work back and forth between the three lead agencies trying to figure out what we're going to do with that revenue. Historically, that revenue was existing before the Wake Transit Plan, and it went to Go Triangle before the Wake Transit Plan. With the advent of the Wake Transit Plan, as well as the Durham and Orange Transit Plan, that revenue was split between, Go Triangle retained 50% of it, and then the other 50% was split between the three transit plans according to, I believe, population at the time. And so Wake County and Campo stances that we should continue that split. And so that's what we're working through. So again, that's why we highlight that revenue source as a potential challenge. And we're working through that, hope to have some guidance on that over the next couple of months or so. So going back to the revenue, we have roughly half of it has been programmed. So we estimate we have around $1.5 billion for new investments. So as we began developing the investment strategy and looking at the public feedback, we looked at the transit priorities that were identified by the public, and then we used those priorities to begin selecting projects, programs, and services to fund. We estimated the cost of those projects, programs, services, and confirmed the revenues that we would have to fund those. And then we developed the draft 2035 investment strategy. And then that investment strategy will, in the final plan that we'll have coming out this summer, will directly relate and have some outcomes and expected results relating to really goals and objectives of what we hope to achieve with this additional service and funding, such as increasing the number of, the amount of population in the county that is within a quarter or a half mile of transit. That'll be one of, that's usually one of our yardsticks that we use. So again, the proposed investment strategy is right around $3.3 billion, which matches our estimated revenues. So going, looking at the priorities, we have our four big moves, which connect the region, connect all Wake County communities, create frequent, reliable urban mobility, and enhance access to transit. And then we noted that the community and stakeholder priorities through the two phases of public engagement included regional connections, comfortable bus stops, crosswalks and sidewalks, frequent bus service, and night and weekend service. And we use those to develop our priorities, which really fall under three buckets within the four big moves. Invest in the regional network, serving more people, and serving more places. Regional network investments, including building out the core BRT network, including the new proposed BRT along I-40, strengthening connections to Raleigh or Cary, supporting the regional rail network, allocate funding for bus stops, crosswalks and sidewalks, and investing in the community funding area. We're working towards, we want to work towards serving more people by operating more frequent bus routes, increasing service levels on successful bus routes, and operating more bus service. And then work on serving more places by investing in regional transit infrastructure, strengthening connections to Raleigh or Cary and other regional destinations. Again, investing in the community funding area and building what we're calling community transportation facilities or community transportation hubs in some of the outlying areas. So the next few slides are new big move maps that really are underlying a lot of this plan and this investment strategy. The first one is a connect the region map. This is what we have termed our DNA map that we have had ever since 2017. The big change to this map for this plan update is that we have removed the commuter rail as a funded project, but instead have noted the areas of rail, of potential rail investment, have added I-40 BRT, and have indicated some additional, have included the extensions of the BRT system down towards Clayton and from Cary through Morseville to RTP. Our next big move is connecting all communities. And as you can see on this map, we are planning to ensure that bus service reaches and touches every community in Wake County. We are, the light-colored circles are the clear circles you see at all the outlying communities. Those are potential areas, potential communities where we may construct or fund the community transportation hubs. And the darker orange circles are all potential, either planned or future, transit centers and transfer points for frequent routes. As you can see on here, and I'll go into this a little bit more, I'll mention this again in a moment, but some of the new investments here include a connector between Roseville and Wake Forest, a new regional route that would go from Raleigh down towards Fuquay Varina, and then back up through, and then a new regional route that would serve Fuquay Varina, Holly Springs, Apex, and the RTP area. Next, we have our frequent and reliable urban mobility. And this map shows our proposed BRT network in the dark red. And then all of the dark black lines or dotted black lines are either current or proposed or potential frequent network routes. So everything in dark black or black dotted lines is either 15-minute service today or could be 15-minute service by 2035. We currently have approximately 100 miles of frequent service in the county. We are proposing that to go to somewhere around 300 miles in the next 10 years. And then finally, we have our enhanced access to transit, which just shows the communities that are part of the community funding area program as well as areas, which is the entire county, that could receive funding for improved bus stops and other bus infrastructure. So going into a little bit more depth in the big moves under invest in the regional network, we are, again, talking about our rail-ready projects. We are planning to have approximately $250 million over the next 10 years to invest in rail projects. We are waiting on the completion of a regional rail implementation plan that's currently being developed by Campo and the Triangle West Transportation Planning Organization. That study is expected to be completed in June, and we're planning to utilize that study to really start to guide some of our rail investments. Potential investments include stations, track improvements, and increased rail service. Potential investments include stations, track improvements, and increased rail service. Depending on the outcomes of the regional rail implementation plan, implementation study, we may need additional study, but at this point, we're hoping to be able to use that regional rail study. We'll also be implementing and expanding the, the BRT network. We have our core network, which is the New Bern Avenue Corridor, the Western Boulevard Corridor, the Southern Corridor, which follows Wilmington Street out south of Raleigh to Garner, and then our Northern Corridor, which generally follows Capitol Boulevard. And we are adding two endpoints onto that corridor as part of this planning effort that Raleigh has been studying. One would go into Midtown, which is the old North Hills area, for those that have been in the area for a long time. And then the other one would go up towards Triangle Town Center. And then we have our BRT extensions, which would be extending the BRT that runs along the Western Boulevard Corridor, and currently would, and would end in Cary, extending that from Cary out to RTP. And then the Southern Corridor that goes to Garner, extending that out to Clayton. We also have the development of the new BRT corridor along I-40 from Raleigh to Triangle Mobility Hub. And then we're funding studies for what we're calling our next gen, our BRT next-gen corridors. And we're studying, we're gonna be planning to fund, studying of five to six of those corridors over the next 10 years, so that we'll have, as the core corridors and the new BRT along I-40 get built out, hopefully when we come and are ready to do an update beyond 2035, we'll be able to start looking at development of additional BRT corridors in Wake County. Serving more people, of course, as I mentioned, a lot of that is expanding frequent bus service. We are looking at adding at least one new frequent route each year and adding a total of 13 routes over the 10 years. And then also providing funding for supporting bus, for supportive bus service investments. We're putting aside 5% contingency for unanticipated projects, keeping a 15% funding set aside for pair transit that is required as part of fixed route operations. We're funding additional expansion vehicles and ongoing replacement vehicles, putting funding aside every year for bus stop sidewalks and crosswalks, funding additional connection points where frequent routes intersect, and setting aside some money to conduct a maintenance facility study if needed, because based on our frequent network expansion, we may have one or more providers that begin bumping up on their capacities of their maintenance Serving more places, we're looking to increase hours and days of existing regional bus routes, adding new regional routes throughout the county, a new town-to-town route from Roseville to Wake Forest, and a new commuter route that would serve the Amazon facility in Garner. Also invest in more community facilities, investing in at least five community transportation facilities or community transportation hubs. We're increasing investment in the community funding area program. Currently, it's $40 million. We are looking to bump that up to actually $60 million, which would be about a three times increase over what it currently is for the 10 years. And then also investing funding for an airport interchange facility off of I-40. I do want to note for the community funding area, for those that may not be as familiar with it as others, the community funding area program is the way that outlying communities like Roseville, Wake Forest, Morseville, Apex can receive, can plan and fund transit investments for their community that is based on the needs and the desires of their community. Currently, it is a 50/50 match, so a community would apply, they would fund 50% of the service or infrastructure, Wake Transit would, would fund the other 50%. That is changing for this, starting in FY '27, and it's dropping for capital and operating, it's dropping to only a 35% local match with Wake Transit funding 65% of that service. Meanwhile, if you want to do a transit plan, we will also, we will still contribute funding towards that, but that is gonna remain at a 50/50 match. As you can see on the screen here, this chart just shows the, the proposed increase in bus service. The dark blue is the currently programmed bus service. The pink is new fixed route services and investments. And then the orange would be the BRT lines as they come on into operation, would be the funding of those. As you can see by FY, by 2035, we would be funding over $120 million of bus operations a year. So next steps, we are currently in our Phase 3 engagement, which is introducing the public to the 10-year investment strategy, asking for any feedback they have. We also have, I believe it's three other companion documents out there for comment or feedback, our transit prioritization guidance, we have our community funding area program management plan, and then we also have some new microtransit guidelines. All those three will be adopted as part of the Wake Transit Plan update. As you can see, we had scheduled, I believe, 17 pop-up events and presentations throughout the county. We're a little over midway through for, for this period, and this period will, this engagement period ends at the end of this month. So as I mentioned, the engagement period will end at the end of this month. We'll have a technical staff, core technical team meeting in June, and then the final, what we're calling the final draft plan, which will be the, actually, the initial draft of the full plan, will be fully completed by our consultants at the end of June. And then we'll take the summer to working with our Transit Planning Advisory Committee partners to ensure that that document includes everything and is where it needs to be. And then that will be released for final public engagement and feedback this fall before we go through adoption with the Campo Executive Board and the Go Triangle Board of Trustees, hopefully around October, November timeframe. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I will also mention, you have at your seats our executive summary, which is really the, it summarizes and provides a lot of the information I provided in this presentation about the four big moves. On the back of that summary is our project website, publicinput.com/waketransit2035. Please go to that website. You can view all the documents there, and you can also provide feedback there. Please ask your network, ask your citizens to do that. We've been working with your staff and staff around the county to make sure we get social media and other things out to the citizens. And yeah, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate that. Good presentation, and I know the board appreciates being informed and staying up with, with the plan. A couple of questions. I think removing the commuter rail was a big decision, and, and also a big change. It made a significant change. Now, from a standpoint of commuter rail, I think that's been planned for many years, and wasn't taxation being done to raise funds already for that? And if so, where's that money and what's it gonna be used for?
So the, the commuter rail was introduced with the initial Wake Transit Plan when it was adopted in 2016 and 2017. And it, it has always been funded by the half-cent transit sales tax that funds all of the Wake Transit improvements. So there's not, it does not have its own funding source. The big issue with commuter rail that we found, we did, Go Triangle conducted two feasibility studies on it, and what we found was, when we originally put the project into the plan, we were estimating the cost to be, I believe, around $1 to $1.5 billion. By 2021 update, that cost had ballooned to more like $3 billion. And then over the next year or two, as Go Triangle finished their feasibility studies, we found out that not only was the cost very high, but we had assumed a federal investment, a federal share of about 50% of that cost. And we found out that the, we were unlikely to get that 50% federal share. So not only had the cost of the plan gone up even with the 50% federal share, but then when we found out that we were unlikely to get that 50% federal share, the cost went up even more. So really what we, and one of the things we asked a lot of the public through this plan update process is, we can keep the commuter rail in the, in the plan and do nothing else. It is, it would suck up about every bit of money. It's, it would suck up about the entire $3 billion. Or we can forego commuter rail, invest in the rail that's already out there and already planned, and release that tranche of money that we've been saving for commuter rail and use it on other investments, such as BRT, regional rail, regional service, commuter, community funding area program, and all the other good investments we have planned.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's a bad decision. In fact, in my opinion, probably was a good decision to do that. But I was thinking with some money raised just for rail, but it wasn't, it's not any money-
Not, not directly for that. We had just been, we had been saving money each year from the transit sales tax and putting it aside into a, an account to save for that rail project.
Yeah. So is that being used, used now for-
Yeah, that'll now be, that'll now be moved over and used on some of these other investments.
Okay, okay. That answered my question then. And I guess the other point I'll make is, we are, we're using the microtransit thing?
Yeah.
And that's been really, that's been really good. I mean, I think it's been well perceived, people using it. It's a point-to-point, on-demand type thing. I don't see a whole lot of that in the plan in the future. I guess it's a good thing, but it really doesn't help commuter traffic, I guess. Is that the problem with, with point-to-point microtransit, or?
To a certain extent, yeah. I mean, what we, we have found the microtransit is a great way to serve a lot of our outlying communities. I will say, Roseville, you're very lucky in that Raleigh decided to operate that microtransit in lieu of the 401X. So whereas some of our other communities actually went through the community funding area to get it, y'all are getting it a little bit for free, but that's a good, but you already had the bus service. So we view that as a even, as a switch, it's just really a switch of Raleigh, instead of funding a fixed route for the same amount of money, they could fund a better service with the microtransit. Microtransit generally is not a great commuter service. It's generally more for getting around in town. Where microtransit is beneficial for commuters is providing that first mile, last mile, so it can get them to the fixed route services that can then get them to where they work. And that's what, I know that's one of the things Raleigh's using the microtransit up here for, is to get people to connect to that WRX service. And we do see that continuing.
Thank you. I think we found some success with that, so I know, I know some people have been giving us some feedback on it. Board, do you guys got a question for Ben?
Yes, sir, I do. Could you go to page 32? 32? No, one more.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
This one?
Yes, yes, sir. 31. Sorry about that.
That's good.
I see Wake Forest to Roseville, Roseville to Wake Forest has been proposed.
Yes.
But do you see in the future plans that Roseville can be connected to Raleigh using the transit?
So with this plan, the proposal would be a connection from Roseville to Wake Forest that would then provide that connection into Raleigh. So with this plan update, we are not proposing to fund a service directly from Roseville to Raleigh. And a lot of that comes to, comes from what we've seen in ridership data and demand data, and then to, and just the ability of, of what we can fund.
So the $1.5 billion for new improvement, Roseville cannot be a part of that?
You're, like I said, I mean, you would be, you will be getting the, the connection, the direct connection to Wake Forest. I believe that service, and we'll, we have some more planning to do to, to get everything nailed down, but that service, I think, what we've, the assumption we have put in place in this plan is that that service would be all day, every day, and at least during the day through, you know, early evening would be, I believe, 30-minute service. So it would be, it would be a substantial increase in service, but it, it does, it doesn't solve the issue of being able to get directly from Roseville to Raleigh. And that's something we can continue working on. But again, you know, we have, it's a big county, and we have a lot of communities that, that want to see additional service.
Just trying to get ahead of it because with the anticipated growth that we have.
Yeah, I understand. And, and that's, but that's also one of the reasons we put that 5% on in, contingency aside, is if, you know, say in five or six years, Raleigh comes, you know, Go Raleigh comes to us and says, we're seeing, you know, blockbuster service on WRX, and half of the riders are from Roseville, can we do a route directly on 401 from Roseville to Raleigh? We would be able to look at funding that through that reserve fund.
Okay, thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Other questions, commissioners? Any questions, Eric? No? Well, thank you, Ben. Appreciate the update. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate coming out and being able to talk to y'all about this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is our budget, 25, 26 proposed budget presentation. I think that's, Eric is going to kick that off. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Eric.
I hope you all are doing well. Thanks so much for this opportunity. Also greetings to, I know that a lot of people may be tuning in online. Thanks, greetings also to the community and to the staff members, our, our department heads for being here as well. And so I think I'm probably one of two people in, on our whole town staff that loves the budget and likes budget, likes budget season. Budget season kind of kicked off in February. We had some meetings with some of the town board members, the budget committee with Commissioner Billups and Commissioner Long. And also, we've had several meetings internally with staff. More importantly, you know, budget kind of started for me in October of last year. When we moved into this, going into November, going into elections, and knowing that a lot of different shifts will be happening with federal policy, budget, and the economic kind of ecosystem and climate and state of things has been a regular topic amongst all of us managers. A big part of the conversations at all of the conferences, like City Vision that took place in Greenville a few weeks ago. And it's something that we continue to, you know, monitor. The things that impact our budget on a yearly basis are, you know, it is the policy decisions, and that's a big part, and that's something that we're facing right now. But also, the, our budget is greatly impacted by the intangibles like consumer confidence. Because if people don't have confidence, and people hold on to their money, they're not buying cars, they're not buying vehicles, or if they, like if everyone wants to hold on to their vehicle for another extra year before they got a new one, that would dramatically impact our sales, sales tax. And so things like that are what have kind of gone into a lot of the things that have set the stage for the budget presentation, the proposed budget I'll be bringing before you this evening. And these are the things that will continue to stay in the back of our mind as we move through FY '25, '26. And then we'll kind of drive how we, we'll have to pivot in real time if needed. And we continue to get more and more information as we continue to work, as more data comes down from the state to the county to us, and also as we all kind of make our budget presentations. Most recently, Wake County of last week made their countywide presentation, proposed budget that highlighted some different things that we had been seeing as well. And so- Hope technology's not gonna film me today. So before I dive into the budget, I just want to take a few moments and just thank our department heads for leading their respective teams within the town. And also, just, just talk through some of the accomplishments we have for the year from, I'll go department by, department by department, and just give some context on the impact of those things. They're in no particular order, but starting with just at a high level of administration, we were able to fill some key positions this year, the assistant town manager, and then also hire the town's first kind of like on-staff engineer, our capital, capital projects manager. This helped- This helped us to fill some major gaps within our, like our executive, strengthen our executive capacity when it comes to an executive leadership team, because we were kind of like a man down last year as we went through transition. But also allowed us to better guide some of the infrastructure development over the last year. And so I know that a lot of us see the Main Street project that's out in front of us. But other things that happened throughout the year was like the Rogers, the Rogers Road widening. Will it be that project closed out? Their project came in under budget and under time. The farm entrance, that has been established, that project finished on time. And we're in the process of closing that out right now, settling up the last little bit of that retainage and releasing it to Cardinal, who's been, was a great partner on that work. Also, we completed, as of this week, the construction of Mill Bridge Amphitheater. And so part of that was grant funded, partially funded by a grant. And so those projects that we have full control over, they move super quick, and we're able to accomplish those things. Also, this year, we've initiated, initiated the design and soon the site development phase for the town campus, or the municipal complex that you all fully funded last year through our capital improvement, our capital improvement portfolio. A big part of that is the police station and the fire station, just to remind you. But also, we've been working with Wake County over the last year to begin preparing for that first library here in Roseville. And so a part of that site development for that municipal complex is the site development for that town campus as well. Additionally, we expanded our communications. We continue to work on that with our new communication specialists. We enhance how we, how we engage with our residents, also increase our transparency through social media, and also have been working to refine like our newsletter and our websites to make information more present, more available for our community, increase, to increase transparency. That's something that we're looking to build on going into this upcoming year. As you know, we redid our website last year, but we want to do it again. And so by leveraging that and strengthening our, how we engage in, how we engage and communicate with our community, that'll help us a lot when it comes to hearing their needs and being able to meet it in real time. One thing that we're doing in this upcoming year is developing a communication, a community engagement strategy that will help us refine and know what are all those mechanisms that reach those different areas within our community so that we can streamline those things. Our planning department has been really great as they continue to do their plan reviews, do those construction revisions, and also to collaborate with that extended area that we serve. Bringing online two major commercial projects of Cobblestone and Walbrook. Those things have done great for us, and those things that will continue to see the impact on, on us when it comes to our tax base. But more importantly, bringing along or diversifying the experience that our residents have by having more restaurants and more amenities here within the town. Two other things that the planning department focused on, like they always do, is that long, the long-range planning. We have our first affordable housing plan, which has been a great experience to have. We've been commended for that from other managers and other cities and towns in the region because we're the first town of our size to have one. Usually, an affordable housing plan comes with a community that has, you know, 200,000, 300,000 people, like your Charlottes, your Rallies, or even your Greensburrows. But that's something that we've taken initiative on, and that's something that I feel like is setting us up for advancement for the future. The other thing is our comprehensive plan. That's going on a date that you should be thinking about and the community should be thinking about is June 24th. And so please mark your calendars. That's a public meeting in which we'll gather feedback on the future land use map and more. And so that's something that you'll see advertised about on our website and also on our community calendar. The other thing, which is pretty obvious that the planning department has been doing, is just facilitating a lot of residential growth. Those things are a blessing to us. There's been several new single-family permits, residential lots recorded. Lots and acreage are currently under construction, and we're also adding additional lane mileage to our town. And so that's just, that kind of embodies our footprint and how it continues to grow, and how we continue to welcome more people into our town, and we continue to diversify as our resident population and people we serve continue to diversify and expand. Our finance department has done a great job at modernizing our financial operations. Every single week, we pay more and more people electronically instead of signing physical checks, which is great for security and efficiency purposes. We also refine how our residents can pay things online as well. Parks and Recreation, they rolled out several new programs over this past year. In addition to working on those updates to our Main Street Park, they did some comprehensive updates for that as far as painting of the shelters, the gazebos, adding high-speed internet and security cameras, and continuing to work on the landscaping and parking resurfacing in the area. Police Department, shout out to Chief and the team. They, as you know, Roseville sits as the second safest city in North Carolina. The thing that I love about our police department is they aren't just keeping us safe. They're continuing to roll out new programming and also provide more information to our public that builds that public trust. And that's, that relationship between our community and our police officers is very valuable because it's not, it's not just important that people rate us as being safe. It's very important that our residents actually feel safe when they come through our community. Because those two different things are very, very different. You can be safe and then also not feel safe. And so that's been something that we're very, very proud of. Economic development-wise, there have been several milestones in our commercial growth. One of those things is even going to be happening tomorrow as we have a grand opening for our Publix, which is a game changer for Roseville, providing long-awaited additional grocery choice and also economic diversification for us. We'll talk a little bit more about our tax base and how it's diversifying. But every time that we have a major, a major commercial business open up, it really helps us out and also helps our residents out as they decrease that tax burden on them as we continue to grow and expand. One other thing is our Wake Med has decided to open a new medical facility here on Burlington Mills Road. That announcement was made about two weeks ago, and that's something we look forward to as well. And that's just, all those things kind of play into that economic ecosystem and allowing people to just live, work, play, shop, dine, walk, and also get healthcare here within the town. And so that's something that will help us out a lot. A few other things is just our Public Works Department. They have done a great job as far as internalizing yard waste for us this year. That's one of the biggest, one of the first major services that we brought internal. There'll be more services that I'll cover later in the presentation that we'll be bringing internal this year. But bringing in yard waste was a very, very, very big win for us. Having, having that in-house brings us cost savings, but more importantly, it improves the service reliability with our community. We've gone through some transitions with our Public Works staff, but we're adding, we're backfilling those positions. So we're hoping that every, with every passing month and week that we do our yard waste, that it improves that experience that we have for them. The Public Works Department has done a great job of taking a strong sense of ownership for it because it is no small task to be able to do those things, like yard waste pickup consistently rain, well, particularly in this rain because those things get pretty heavy. And so they're continuing to refine the systems to be able to communicate about the standards for pickup so that residents know why their stuff was not picked up when it's like 200 pounds and soaking wet. And so those are things that we're refining to increase that experience for our customers as well. Other big wins as far as like additions to staff within Public Works is that focusing on investing in them, investing on them as far as their talent and getting them training, but also being targeted on hires and bringing in new maintenance team members that have strengths in things like HVAC. Those things have helped us to be able to save money from having to go out to get services for things being fixed. But, and to be able to handle those things internally. And so that's symbolic of some things that we're looking to do by bringing other services internal to help us kind of stand on our own, to have more control over the experience. Our experience as staff and not having to rely on so many contractors, but also to be able to streamline service delivery to our residents, which has been great. I will say the biggest thing that, the biggest thing that our Public Works Director team highlighted as far as an accomplishment for them has been really focusing on the culture there within their department. They got, we were able to get them the uniforms, and they've really been leaning into promoting more visibility for their department, but also more trust and civic pride and engagement. And so being able to be out about in the, in the community and serving them in a way they're seen as professional and that, and knowing that they represent, they are an extension of the town as they go from door to door has been very, very positive for them. We know that we don't get to see all of our residents every single day, but they get to see pretty much every single street, every single house, everyone, every single week. And so that's really important that they feel that way about their experience and also that we're able to support them with development-wise and also with the small things like uniforms that will help them to be able to engage our community with confidence. With our human, human resources department, Ms. Lisa was very happy to inform us that we had zero workers' compensation injuries this fiscal year, which is really, really great. That success not only shows that we support safety within our workplace culture, but also it positively, positively impacts our bottom line when it comes to insurance renewal rates and also the cost of management and actually having a workforce. And so those are just some small wins from the year that I think are notable and worth mentioning. I just wanted to thank our staff for being so committed to serving not just internally with each other, but externally to the community and for showing up despite all and giving their heart on a day-to-day basis. So, thank you. So we'll jump into proposed budget for FY 2526. It's a standard note that I, that I always mention that this budget was prepared in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act and North Carolina General Statute 159-11. That's a note that you will see at the front of all budget manuals, and it's something that we all must mention and note, and note that we are operating in compliance with the expectation that is set for us by the North Carolina General Statute to ensure that all of the funding that is sent out, given out and committed is done so for the public good and done with the interest of being effective, efficient, and being good stewards of the tax money that they provide us through their property, through their shopping, even through their fees when it comes to growth. And so I'm always happy to say that. I'll talk about the, the order of the presentation moving forward is just talking briefly about the town vision also. And then I'll talk about the budget focus and priorities, and then give an overview of the budget. Taking a brief pit stop to talk about revenues and how revenues have not grown as much as we thought coming in this year. And then as a result, set three priorities before you. The first one will be investing in the current personnel and building organizational capacity. The second one is focused on essential services and strategic expansion. And then the third one is, most importantly, is creating a foundation for long-term planning. Here on the slide is, these are the four focus areas of our strategic plan. And so our vision remains the same this year as last year. It was updated through our strategic planning process. And that is that, and that is, Roseville is a dynamic, tight-knit community that fosters genuine connections and embraces change while maintaining its unique local character. The first focus area is connected communities, which is all about fostering a sense of belonging. As we continue to grow, it's important that we continue, that we scale up our services so that the people that move into our ETJ or even those more extended areas within our town, that they feel connected, but most importantly, the people that live right in our town center, that we continue to build up our capacity to make sure that they maintain that sense of belonging that they've, they felt over the last 10, 15, and 20 years. And so keeping that growth in mind, but also making sure that we continue to preserve the experience for our residents that have been here since, since day one. The second one is abundant amenities. This abundant amenities talks about building our town's resources to reflect our values and enrich residents' lives. This has captured a lot within our infrastructure that we're continuing to build out and also the things that exist within our capital improvement, our capital improvement projects, programs, portfolio. And so the town campus focusing on Main Street Park, pursuing grants and alternative funding sources to be able to build up those things to where we, people don't have to go out to have an experience, and they can have those things closer here. And the third one is intentional growth, which is embracing change while maintaining a neighborly community. Intentional growth is, and also is about, you know, ensuring that change happens for us, not to us, and that the things and decisions that we make on a day-to-day basis with our programs, with our systems, with our operations, is that we say, this is where, this is where you as a board and our community say we're going, and we, we target and we channel and we point our capacity at those goals. And lastly, a strong, a strong organization. So that's fostering a network where employees feel empowered and supportive. This is really important. The greatest asset of every organization is the human asset. We can't do it, like I, like I mentioned, we can't do it without our department heads. We also can't do it without our frontline workers. And that, that team is expanding this year even with our unification. One thing to note is that our community is growing. Today, Wake County sent out the, we all received, Wake County received, we all received updated information from the state census. And it, you know, in our, from our, in our incorporated area, our population has grown to 11,854. But if we talk about the non-incorporated area, that means we're closer to, we're across that mark of 13,000 people, which is a lot of people. From, from 2020 to 2024, we've grown about 20, 22%. So that means we've added just over 2,000 additional community members to our incorporated area. That is a significant growth. There are other areas that are pacing a little bit more than us, like Zebulon. But that still is in comparison to how many people we have that's still very, very big. And so those are things that we take into account, that I'm taking into account, we're all taking into account as we look at our operations and our systems and our staffing when it comes to our growth. So as mentioned, the... I'm trying to pull this out of order. The three priority areas for the budget, these kind of arose from looking at where we have made past decisions as I communicated to you all within our budget retreat. At any point in time, we, we look five years to the future, but every single year is in the middle of a five-year plan. And when we look at the different pressures that we're having from the economy, these rose to the top. So our number one priority is investing in the current personnel and building organizational capacity. The second one is focusing on essential services and strategic expansion. And the third is creating a foundation for long-term planning. I'll start with just an overview of the budget. As mentioned with, when I talked about population growth, Roseville is dynamic and it's also evolving and continuing to maintain a tight-knit... And continuing to maintain a tight-knit feel as we move into, from year to year is very, very important. This means ensuring that our services like yard waste, even how we engage people at our front desk and they walk in. We continue to refine those systems and be able to make every new resident feel like the residents have, that have lived here over time. Like fiscal years in the past, the intent of this budget is to position the town for growth to happen for Roseville and not just to Roseville. The total budget for the upcoming year is coming up to a grand total of twenty-one million six hundred and seventy, eight hundred forty thousand dollars. This overall budget represents an increase of twenty-four percent from last year. This, that number, if it stood alone, is what seems like a very large increase. But that increase is primarily due to the unification for fire services. Because our town budget will now fully incorporate the full cost of district in the town's budget. Without the fire unification, the growth of the budget is just six point four percent or just over a million dollars of additional, additional revenues. And so that's something that's important to note. As from, from last year, the prior year into last year, the growth of our budget was about twelve percent. And so the lack of new revenues greatly constrained how much we could work with. And when you bring in a department with such great apparatus and expensive things, things to plan for, and also as we look to debt fund. It dramatically decreased the amount of new revenues we had to commit to new initiatives. As far as the capital projects fund that fluctuates from year to year, that amount is driven by projects. This, this current fiscal year is primarily driven by the farm debt service and funds transfer from Roseville Rural Fire Department or the fire station. This is the pie that we often refer to, the ad valorem taxes or the property taxes continue to be just, just south of fifty percent of our overall revenues. We're, we're, we're optimistic about the future commercial growth and how it would, it'll assist us in balancing out our property, our property revenue to commercial. Our ratio between our property revenues and our commercial revenue streams. The opening of the commercial developments within, the commercial developments within our Main Street corridor will no, will no doubt help with this. However, the realization of the tax impact of the opening of those commercial businesses is delayed. And so just because Cobblestone opens up this year doesn't mean we get the money or the, the benefits of that tax base this year. Those are things that will happen over the, the subsequent tax years. Sales tax is the second most important. Internally, we estimated three percent growth of sales tax. That is actually generous when it comes to sales tax. In last week's presentation from our county manager, they estimated zero increase of sales tax. So consumer confidence and consumer spending continue to be something that will be impacting sales tax over the next few years. Intergovernmental is up this year and that is as a result of new revenue from Wake County Fire Tax District. And other rev, the other revenue portion of our general funds revenues is up this year. And that is due to a one-time distribution from the Roseville Rural Fire Department related to unification. General fund expenditures, before we dive into like the different initiatives that these, these funds will be, be connected to. Twelve percent of the proposed budget will go towards general, general government. Development service, nine percent. Public safety will be thirty-four percent. Public safety will be a combination of both our police and fire operations, public works and solid waste. Twelve percent parks and recreation, six percent and capital debt and capital reserves is twenty-seven percent. And so it's important to note that as we move further into funding our CIP portfolio, which is the debt services, the capital and the reserves. That those, those things will be, will start being, will be consistently more or be consistently larger portion of our general funds expenditures activity on an annual basis.
Eric?
Yes?
Quick question for you, sir.
Yes.
With the last slide, are there any departments or services that are seeing any funding decreases or increases this year compared to last?
No one is receiving a fun decrease.
Okay.
But there is, due to the lack of new revenues, how much we've grown the budgets between past years and this year. It's seeming, seemingly kind of flat. And so we're pretty flat as far as like operational costs. There's some departments that didn't request any new money. New funds and others that did, but we could not based off priorities. And so nobody, no department has received a, a cut in their funding as a result of anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
I did see you moved one employee from planning to the new department.
Yes.
So that probably saw.
And that will, yes. And also you'll see kind of like, it kind of washes out because what we'll also talk about, what I'll talk about later is that we're internalizing a few positions that we're adding some positions that will replace contracts that we have with engineering firms and individuals. As far as inspections and plan review, stormwater management. That will, but it all kind of washes out. And so we'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be increasing as far as our operational budget. But we've been consistently spending so much on those contracts from, and, through those third-party kind of vendors that it, it levels out when you look at the big piece of the pie. So the percentages move from one department, you're correct. One, one department to, to another, but it's pretty consistent.
You mentioned debt service capital reserves being increasing maybe?
Yes.
Do you see reserves being incre, I thought reserves was sort of was playing for our capital. So that probably will decrease, but we, that was like a savings account, I think, right?
Right. Ms. Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you go to debt fund, because we're going to be debt funding so much. It's important, just like when you go to get a, on a personal, if you go to your loan, they want to look at your savings account. They'll look at what your reserves are. And so it's strategically, it's in our best interest to increase the amount that we are reserving because we will be debt funding so much. That move or taking those steps intentionally will help us as we go toward, go to the LGC in pursuit of debt funding this fall with Davenport. Our financial consultant.
Yeah, I understand.
But yeah.
But I was thinking some of those reserves is what we, we kind of call our savings account for capital. So, you know, I'm not sure we'll always be doing that.
Yes. It won't. This is just a season. That's correct.
We had to, if we want to get anything done.
Mm-hmm.
Good job on doing that too.
Revenue highlights, property tax. Our property tax rate will remain the same at, at forty cent per one hundred dollars of valuation. Our motor vehicle fees will remain the same at thirty dollars per vehicle. And our solid waste fee will also remain the same at twenty-five dollars per month. A schedule of fees will be updated. I'll talk a little bit about that later, but that's as a result of us bringing certain services internal. So those are certain things that we're either build directly through or would be incurred through Wake County that will, we're bringing that, bringing those things internal. So adjusting those fees is something that's normal when it comes to us incurring more costs internally as staff. But it also, I believe, will help us out when it comes to developers and builders and even external people that work with us getting deals from firms and stuff like that. Our property tax rates being at forty cent, we still sit at a very good place when we look at Wake County. There are other municipalities that are still raising their, their tax rates. That's something that we're not opting to do. We did a great job last year of reserving those pennies to fund our CIP portfolio and the hope is that over the future years that the commu, their commercial growth and our growth as far as residents will increase the value of those pennies for us to where that we don't have to look to shift that property tax number as much. And so we're very happy with that and that's where we're deciding to stay. And so you do not have to worry about anyone asking you about your property taxes this year. This schedule of fees, uh, it's, just wanted to highlight just how these, these fees as far as the technology fee, which comes with our planning department, this is common across a lot of municipalities. Uh, which is we have, the planning department is using, I believe GovWell. Yeah, GovWell. And so the actual technology that developers use to upload their plans and all those different things and facilitate those instead of paper documents going back and forth. There's a technology fee used for that. And then the sketch plan, that's a cost, cost per meeting and that is accounting for staff time. Because there are iterations that need to happen. And so this is something that's also common. And then you'll see just updates to site development fees, subdivision plaits, construction, infrastructure drawings. And even when we get down to final subdivision plaits and, and then, yeah. And so this is updated fees as a result of us bringing certain things internal. What you'll also see is that the traffic impact analysis, this flag for prepayment. One thing that you all have been intentional about over the years is that ensuring that traffic impact analysis are conducted when new subdivisions and developments come in or new applicants propose different ideas. And I believe it was two or three years ago where in order to ensure that there's continuity in those, those TIA's or traffic impact analysis that they would, we would be the ones that, the town or our staff, planning staff will facilitate that through the same engineering firm so that they all, that we know that information from one TIA makes it to another. And that is something that continues to happen. And to be intentional about our planning staff's capacity and them not having to hunt down people to pay their bills. Which is something that, um, believe it or not, developers are not always quick to do is to pay their TIA bills or engineer bills. We're asking that it be prepayment on that particular item. And so that's just a step for accountability to ensure that we don't have lingering costs and that we're able to stay real time as far as like our budget administration for the department.
Eric, are these fees comparable to surrounding municipalities?
Yes. Yes, they are. I worked with the planning department. They looked, uh, we have not updated our fees as long as I've been here in a major way. And our planning department, they did, um, they looked at the market, they looked at what other people's fees are and they said that they are comparable. Yes, ma'am.
Seeing twenty dollars on there is shocking because it's, I, I don't know what the going rate for, for that fee would be, but just, I would think twenty dollars is a good fee based on the cost of everything else these days.
Sheaper than two dozen eggs.
What'd you say? It's two dozen eggs?
Sheaper than two dozen eggs.
That's what I'm saying. It's, it's a little on the, the light side.
Inflation joke.
Yeah.
And so, yes. Other things to note is that grants, and so we're working through the administrative process when it comes to the two community funding grants that we received, that is bid out. So we'll be doing the environmental surveys for that. The amount of money goes towards the Main Street part, the Main Street part grant is, I believe, four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and then for the library site is three, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So those are grants that we're working for now. New grants to be mindful of is that we've applied for is a governor's highway safety plan program, traffic unit. So that's two staff members, fully funding two new staff members for our police department. And also the cybersecurity audit that we applied for and then also disaster preparedness grant that we applied for as well. And so as those, as we hear back from those, you'll see resolutions for those and you'll see funds shift to be able to serve for the match for that. Some of them will reimburse, others may be real-time drawdown for it, but those are things that we're taking into account. So getting to, that was revenues. Just want to talk through the priority one, the priorities of the budget. Priority one, investing in current personnel and building organizational capacity. You as the town board and also the leadership team believe that the most valuable asset of every organization are the human assets. And so our town staff is a very talented team of public servants that are, that are committed to ensuring the town's success. In recognition of their excellence, the proposed budget contains a series of promotions, reclassifications and a realignment of personnel to more closely capture operations. There'll be like a shift in our org chart that I'll go through as well to highlight what will be kind of like the work groups and more closely aligned departments to break down barriers between their operations. And so it's important that we look at our org chart as not being just a flow diagram, but that it represent how we actually do work on the day-to-day. At an employee level, we did execute a pay set this year. And so I'll be recommending that a minimal four point three increase, a four point three percent increase for all staff. The average increase among staff will be about six point five percent because the, the adjustment of those, of those compensation is connected to how their position sits within the market. And then also there will be the strategic addressing of compression of, of some salaries. Both kind of like in departments and then across and in the department or across the organization as well. The merit will be up to two percent. With the opportunity for an additional one percent for staff that exceed. And other, and as far as our, our benefits, we've shifted to the end chip pool, pool trust. It's a trust that is managed by Gallagher. Will be pivoting towards Blue Cross Blue Shield as being our, um, medical provider. Being within that particular pool will give us some stability and consistency as far as year-to-year increases. So that as we move into next year and the subsequent year, or we add and even as we add more staff, we don't see a dramatic increase in our benefits experience. Additionally, when it comes to elders, the North Carolina general statutes have increased the amount of the contributions for public safety personnel. And so that is reflected within the proposed budget as well. And then lastly, just continued support for career progress, training and development. We'll be tweaking some of the systems and programs that we have to have incentives for people who get certain certifications and education related to their role. And so refining that over the next three to four months will be important as we look to appraisals as well. One thing that we're doing that I'm, from just an organizational standpoint that won't be reflected in the budget is syncing up the evaluations for all staff. the, um, evaluations for all staff to be a certain time in the year, um, so that we can get on the same page and, um, as far as our performance management. And also, um, it will help us when it comes to doing salary projection, salary projections, um, within our budget. It's very difficult when everyone is at different places in the year. When it comes, when you get to budget season, you want to do a very accurate projection of salaries and what the operational cost would be for the town, since the people take up a big part of it. And also to be able to do that takeoff when it comes to health and benefits. Since, um, I believe, um, the cost of benefits will be increasing over the, um, year over year, over future years. A benefit to that, um, that our staff, I think, will appreciate is that by moving, um, kind of like resetting our performance management system, some people that would have been waiting until like next June to get their reevaluation. All of those would happen later this year around the October, November date. And so we'll be able to kind of pay them for their performance sooner when it, in this, in this fiscal year. And I believe that'd help out our staff a lot when it comes to some of the inflation that we're seeing within the market that's making, um, money just a little bit more tight. And so, um, there will be that, um, the annual increase, um, that's attached to this year, which will be four point three percent. Um, and then that cost of living, um, well, yeah. And then the merit will come directly after in a few months. And so that's something I think will reflect well with that, but we have to work with, um, leadership and the department has to be able to, um, strategically approach their evaluation so that it's not, it won't be, um, too consuming for them.
The pay study increase takes place July one?
It'd be July one.
And that will be all employees, even the ones, the new ones coming in?
Even employee, even the new ones, yes.
Fire department?
Yeah. And so an important part of, um, the unification is that, um, we honor their, um, their seniority with the fire department. And then also if they were in the, if they were with the fire department, moving into July one, they would have been getting an increase as well. And so what we didn't want to do was since we were in the midst of a pay study, is to bring them in and they be behind.
So the first day they get an increase?
Day one, yes. And it will be, but it will be something that they would have received if they were at, with the fire department. And so we don't want the unification to be a barrier to their, to their growth. We want to ensure that it's as much continuity as possible and they know that, um, you know, they're not starting over. It's hard enough to, to go through change. And so we don't want people to feel like they're behind a ball on that. Yes, sir. These are just the, uh, the, the, this is a snapshot of the additional positions. Some of them are offset by internalizing things we used to pay contractors for. And then some, but in the lower ones as far as the fire, uh, positions are, positions that come, are coming into the town as a result of the unification. And so, um, administration will, um, there'll be an administrative support specialist. And then within our planning department, there'll be an adminis- administration, administrative support specialist as well. And there's a current vacancy within our, um, within the planning department. That was a planner two, kind of long range planner. That'll transition to be a, a senior planner. And that senior planner position will be taking on, um, some of the responsibilities we're paying, our Wills of revenues and our Bolton Minks to do plan review. And so that'll be saving us, um, on contracted services for that department. The other two positions, um, that will be, um, kind of like internalizing services, our stormwater program manager. Um, that's something that we have to do as far as like pursuing our MS four. Is it MS four? That's the right acronym, right? MS four? But our, um, stormwater program, since we've reached a certain population, more than ten thousand people, um, is common for municipalities to internalize that stormwater, um, management and inspection service. That's something that we would have to go to Wake County for. And they're encouraging us to take it off their hands as well. And so that's something that we'll be bringing internal. And the other is their engineering inspector. Um, responsibilities, that engineering inspector is, um, is a, that engineering inspection is the inspection of public and private infrastructure. And so those are driveway permits, sidewalks, curb and gutter, slump text on concrete. Um, the paving of roads as far as, um, doing proof rolls and ensuring that roads and roads are put in, um, properly as we bring those, bring that new mileage in. Um, this has been covered over the last several years by a contractor that has worked with us directly, but that contractor who is a retired DOT, um, gentleman is looking to retire from his second, um, career. And so, um, we'll be having some overlap between those services, um, and this new hire to our team. So that there can be some onboarding of some of the major projects that are going on and developments and also be some, um, some knowledge transfer about some of the historical things, um, that have gone on as far as development wise within the town. So there will be some overlap, but, um, we're looking forward to that. And so as you see, uh, between the stormwater man, stormwater program manager and the engineering inspector, you see that department engineering. We'll be breaking out engineering into its own, kind of like subdepartment, um, within the, um, the proposed budget and it'll consist of four. And so it'll be our current capital improvement, uh, capital projects manager. It'll be the approved stormwater technician, which is the person that will do the inspections of the infrastructure that we already have in this year's budget, but we have not filled that position yet. And then the new stormwater program manager that we're required to have, um, funded, um, by July one based off, uh, the stormwater program, uh, that we've offered up to, for approval by the state, um, and the engineering inspector. So, um, this is, this is a new step for us, um, that I think will help us as far as, um, continuing to be able to stand on our own and not have to rely on other people or other agencies to be able to inspect our work, approve our work and move our capital projects forward.
I thought, um, I thought I saw a chart, I can't find it anymore. Yeah, yeah, I think twenty six, I thought it was four people going into new engineering section. One of them was transferred.
One is coming from, one was a public works position and that was a stormwater technician. And then one is coming from administration, which is a capital projects manager.
So it's two transferring in there?
Two were transferring. And then the stormwater program manager, um, if we would have budgeted last year, would have been in public works, but it's going to go into engineering, um, directly. Then the engineering inspector was a contracting planning, contracted work through planning that we also would pay through, um, capital projects. But that, that position will be, come from being distributed through a contract to being inside of the engineering department.
I thought, um, I thought what I saw, except fire department, exclude them, I thought it was the net five increase. But you saying it's just a net four increase is what you got up there?
It's four. And it's four and then that, in the, the planning, the, the planner two, there's a reclassification.
Okay.
So would it be five new, you'll see five new positions since that, um, but only four. You see five new listed in the list of positions as far as like job descriptions, but only four of them are new budgetary existence, like as far as like budget wise.
But the bottom line is just four increase.
Just four increases, yes.
And that, those four there.
And so those four, those four, that one reclass and then the fifteen positions that come over from the fire department leave us eighteen and a half, um, um, additional total personnel. And so that moves us up to being, having eight, eighty-two, uh, unique staff members, um, with the town.
You say eighty-two?
Eighty-two. Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question. So with all the growth that we have, there's no, Michael doesn't need any help? Just curious.
Economic development?
Yeah.
Michael didn't ask for a person? But so one thing that, um, and so the, the economic development, um, department and also, um, the engineering department, they are departments as far as budget wise. But when we operate on day to day basis, um, economic development is within the administrative team. And so, um, even though Michael is economic development by himself, he partners and works closely with myself, um, Steven and Candace, uh, which is our communications person. So he doesn't like stand out on his own on an island. And so, um, we do know that we need to, if, we need to start focus on kind of like, um, community engagement or community development. That's something we're working through as far as how does that land or where does that sit? Cause right now that's a shared responsibility amongst about six people with like about five percent being here, fifteen percent being here, twenty percent being here, ten percent being here. You know, if, on any given day, you know, like I, you, me, it could be one hundred percent of my day. And so that community engagement, um, and community development piece is something that we have, it's a muscle we have to build, it's something that we're doing. But being a, that will be something we'll look at over this next year because there are, are inroads that we need to make through better utilizing the partnerships and partnering with like our HOAs. Um, and so this kind of overlaps with even some of the work that PD may be doing when it comes to like nationalizing out and making inroads in communities as well. Cause I know that we reach out to, to, um, CAP and will say, can I get a list of all the HOA presidents? Or when the mayor has, hey, can we sit down with these two HOAs? And so those things are kind of fall in that little nebulous bucket that we all kind of help with to make sure that Michael, um, can focus on like the economic development piece. But we collaborate a lot. Um, we know that he, we, we know that he will likely need support in that. Um, so, but yes.
I, I think this may be a good time, you brought up a staffing question, maybe the committee, the budget committee, Paul or, or, um, Linwood. I know y'all work closely, more closely with them than this end of the board. Is anything y'all want to add, input from y'all's work at all?
No, I don't have anything to add to it. I think they, uh, they, they spelled it out pretty well. I mean, you're getting an overview tonight. But, um, their explanation of why they need these people or why we were bringing new people in for these positions, uh, made perfect sense. So, I mean, yeah.
I concur. I, I think the only thing that I, and then not to not, not to put on a burden for the budget was just cybersecurity. And we have a grant that we're working for that, so.
Yeah, I know you've been talking about IT person for a long time, but I, I agree. I really, I really think we do, but I know, I know everything's a priority. And I just want to, I just want, I think this is a good time to mention this because we're talking about staff. We're fortunate. Some of his peers, and I, I've, I've mentioned one that's really big, Kerry. They keep, they're not adding any new employees this year. They're trying to keep the ones they got without doing any cuts. And they increasing, they increasing the taxes by about two pennies, I think. Just to cover the staff, just to keep from laying, get, you know, downsizing. And, um, so we're fortunate that we ain't in that situation. And I think Amy and the people that does the budget manager, and Amy does a really good job of keeping us out of those tough situations. But it's making tough decisions though. It's making tough decisions. Cause I, I, I think, I think, I think the IT person has got to be on the, on the radar some point in time. And also the community, right, because I, it would take a lot of work off of me if we had a community relations person.
That's correct.
And you too, me and you both.
That's a big piece of adding that administrative support to the, um, app, app administration department. Because we do not have that administrative capacity. Since our, um, like our, even we rotated over and our town clerk, she's spending a lot of time, um, doing the clerk work, that she can't do the people stuff, um, that her predecessor did. And so by, since she spends so much time on the ordinances, in municipal, on the trainings, all that kind of stuff, building that administrative support will help a lot with that, um, because we don't have, um, because we also lost in the transition, our clerk, that familiar face, name and person that people would just call. And so thankfully, um, our current town clerk has longevity with us. And so, um, some of those people in our community will just call her directly, but we're, we have to be able, we have to build those relationships again. That we're kind of lost in that transition to where, um, we can have that one place that people can kind of call as far as those one offs, intangibles, small fires that could become larger ones if go, go unaddressed. And so, um, that's something we're working through as an administration department. I felt honestly kind of guilty as far as, you know, that we are strapped on our budget and knowing that we needed to add that administrative support to administration. Because I know that other departments really need a staff member as well. But I, the hope is that some of the small fires that consume our time, we can kind of point towards this, um, this role. And be a serious opportunity for someone to really learn about all the different things that happen throughout a municipality. Um, and not be in that box of, I'm just an administrator person. Cause there is, there are things that, that administrative person can tackle from people that call PD or call planning. Planning is a ton of calls about stuff that have, um, that are planning adjacent. And to be the go-to person to bridge connects between us and like the Wake County, us and the Duke Energy, the Wake Electrics and those. And so that's our hope, um, that we can build that capacity. And I also know that that IT person is very, very important, um, which kind of segues into like the next slide. And so right now, like our, this is our current org chart. Our org chart, to me, has been, um, very two dimensional. And hasn't, um, really spoke to like how the departments kind of connect and move and engage with each other. But also the purpose they kind of serve, um, pointing out to the community as well. And so I kind of sat down and looked at what are the departments that naturally kind of, um, partner together and run together? And also I referenced the organizational assessment that was done in two thousand nine by Raftellus, which has kind of set our trajectory. That's as far as like what position, I mean, they, you know, for lack of words, predicted or prophesied like certain positions that should be coming online based on our growth. And they were about ninety-five percent accurate. And so, um, the, the budget document contains, um, an updated org chart. That kind of gives it more dimension. And so like, for example, we're bringing in fire. That, I still says future on that because they're technically like not here yet, um, but they'll be here July one. And so, um, solidifying that partnership between police and fire being that public safety services. And then when we think about, um, cause right now, like they have a public safety meeting consistently, you know, we attend. You know, I missed it today, uh, because I was planning for this presentation and doing stuff on Main Street. But those are, that is a subgroup within our departments or our, our team that already meets and meets consistently. And then when it comes to our administrative services or our internal services, um, finance, um, and human resources are super close, very closely related. And I also, I also find myself in meetings with them, talking about key internal service deliveries and processes, um, and operations. Um, and then within that finance department, as you mentioned about IT, um, that finance department kind of champions that contract for information technology services. Um, and right now that's a contract. But I put that there in yellow because that is something that we need to be constantly thinking about. And it's something that we want to be able to communicate even through our org chart, that our attentiveness towards that cybersecurity and IT muscle. It's something that we are focused on and that we're taking into account and that we're planning for. And then as you go to the purple, you see those community service, those, community services. Some places call them external services, external service departments. But to me, um, deeming this group as the community services, um, kind of like collective speaks to the fact that all of these departments face hourly and these departments are the ones that engage with outside of public safety from safety and law enforcement and fire suppression and prevention are the ones that engage with our community the most on a, on a day to day, week to week, month to month basis. And also those are the departments that champion the systems that, um, facilitate like our growth kind of moving forward. And also those are the departments that champion the systems that facilitate like our growth kind of moving forward externally. So the planning department, engineering department. And so, and, and so by starting to work as an organization to not just say we want to tear down silos in a very like nebulous, high level way and say, hey, you know, these two departments work closely together. We're not really trying to tear down a silo between police and fire. You know, and we know that police and fire also have a really close kind of connection in their work to public works. So we're not really trying to do that. The focus will be how do we get this administrative services group to work more closely with our public safety, our public safety services? And so by identifying the different systems that they share will help a lot with increasing our efficiency when it comes to our, our operations. Because there are a lot of different things that are kind of hybrid, you know, like off duty pay. That is something that connects public services to administrative services. Like, and then when it comes to even finance, bridging that gap between that and even the operations between our Parks and Recreation, Economic Development. And so being able to kind of say, these groups kind of naturally work together. Because I know that on any given day I can call Medit and I know that he's talked to somebody. I'm sorry, he's talked to somebody within Planning, Public Works, Economic Development or Parks and Recreation about something. I don't have, and so that's, and so by kind of clearly stating those things and looking at these larger kind of organizational operation and focus areas, I think it'd help us kind of tear down those silos in a more strategic way and be intentional on how we reposition and we connect and even share the resources that we have. And so that kind of dovetail with what you are, we're talking about a bit as far as our org chart. Staff hasn't seen this, we're supposed to have an executive leadership team meeting on yesterday, but it'd be moved to next week. But this, just this effort of us having more sync and synergy and continuity between how we work together will help us out a lot when it comes to being responsive to the needs of our community and also being responsive to requests that we get from you all on a day to day basis as well.
So who, who's managing the Engineering Department?
So the men, the Engineering Department will be me right now. Because it is the addition of four people. And because right now we have all these CIP projects that are going on that I've kind of had my hands in. For the next year until we get through the Main Street project, I think just for continuity sake, it will be best for the report to me. But the goal is to take that, those flat positions and to kind of establish them as being a department to where one of those positions is the manager of that Engineering Department. And so the goal is to kind of, kind of.
Find a manager.
Find a manager within, within the midst of that. And so that's what we're working, working towards. Been working with our current Capital Projects Manager on just like his leadership development path to be able to position him to be that. But in general, that particular sect, because it's so technical, does not have to be as flat as you would see some departments. And so establish someone as a manager there will be, will be best. So, and when looking at just the future growth and when you look at how other municipalities are structured and even the organizational assessment, they came from Raftellus in two thousand nineteen. They established this community services group as being like the operations portfolio. And so in most places, even in Lake Forest, all of the planning, engineering, economic development, Parks and Recreation and Public Works report to the same person and not, not be split. But there's some transitions that we need to make as far as this. Knowledge, information and all those different things with some of these major projects that have going on. I think that once we get through this season that we have with the Main Street project, it'd be easier to kind of stand up that department and shift those over into what could be that operations portfolio. But to answer your question, it'd be reporting to myself. Hopefully these next two priorities will go quicker. But the second priority is focusing on essential services and strategic expansion. Key things, internalizing services. The engineering inspector position is listed out first and the plan review that's listed out in the third. Those are offsetting contracts that we have with the community, I mean, have with other contractors, external parties. And yard waste is just, we're continuing the implementation of that. And so there'll be a compactor truck within the budget that will be, that we planned for last year that we would do this year. And that just helps with the execution of that, that yard waste program. Say what's a lot, trips, tipping fees that are going up. And so having that, that's something that we reflected in the budget. We kind of talked through this already, but with engineering, it will kind of, it will arise. You'll see that in the budget as a new division. The focus for this Engineering Department right now will be on capital programs, stormwater. Relocated to current positions, the Capital Projects Manager and the Stormwater Technician. One was in administration, the other one in Public Works to that Engineering Division. And then added the two new, new positions of the Stormwater Program Manager and the Engineering Inspector, which is internalizing usually what's been traditionally contracted work. And then public safety is the last one that kind of stands up this focus area. And the big thing that will be happening this year is unification. And so the integration of fire services just calls for new reserve for, new reserve for fire asset replacements. So you'll see that in the budget. That is when we set out, set aside a chunk of money every single year in partnership with Wake County to be prepared for the time that we need to replace an apparatus. We could be, you know, between two point five to four million dollars when it comes to a fire truck. The other thing that is included in the budget is license plate readers. This is something we've set up in the budget. Chief has been working with their current year depart, their current year's budget to buy LPRs. When they did an analysis of like how many they would need to be able to cover, quote, cover the town as far as like all the entrances. And so we'll be buying some this year within the current budget, but also leveraging next year's budget to buy that. I think critical mass is like ten or twelve, ten, that will help us to be able to cover the entrances and exits of the town to be able to add to their ability to keep us safe.
Is it a large organization that manages that for us? So we kind of contract with them? I guess it's a nationwide thing or?
It is. It's a company that is a fragmentary mysterious and we can also piggyback off of our offices as well.
So we don't have to do any monitoring, anything like that?
Also with public safety included in the budget is a grant, is a grant match for the Governor's Highway Safety Program for the Traffic Enforcement Unit and IT enhancements that are for police and fire. So it's updating of servers and technology with regards to that. I think PD is the, the headiest utilizer of Wi-Fi that we have because of how they have to pull up and download video very rapidly from, on their body cams when they pull up next to the building. And so those are things that we're doing in regards to that.
Somewhere along the line, you guys may have gone over the, the COPS Grant Program. That's going to be in the budget this year. So is that adding personnel?
The COPS Grant?
Yeah, the, it says, it says focused, focused on community engagement per COPS Grant.
Right, so the COPS Grant is something that we already have. That is for the Community Resource Officer.
Okay.
Am I right? That's for the CRO position. And so that's something that is kind of rolling from last year to this year. It's accounted for in the budget because it's something that we pay for and we draw down on that federal money on a quarterly basis, I believe.
Got you.
To get, get the money back from the expenses for that.
Got you. A lot of times COPS Grant is connected to another employee, but that's not the case this time. It is? But we've already hired that person? Got you, okay.
And priority three, that the recommendations with the budget supports is creating a foundation for long-term planning. The goal for this is very, very much kind of like organizational. And so the first goal of this priority is maximizing our resources. And so taking advantage of how budgetarily things are kind of compressed and we don't, we're not seeing a lot of growth in staff to strategically focus on ensuring that we're ready for growth. So an example will be, we're literally limited by the amount of space we have. And so even if we want to add twenty staff, we can't. We don't have footprint. But taking this time to refine our systems and some of our, and how we work in our core services and not stretching ourselves thin will help us be able to scale those things up. When, you know, for example, the police department comes online and we can no longer say, hey, where are we going to put these people? Right? Because that police department, the police department and fire department coming online will also come, happen concurrently with the fact that we have a lot of homes that are in the queue that are going to be building out. That will, that right now they're just ideas as far as like site work. But those CEOs, those certificates of occupancy are going to start rolling in for that. And so getting those core services together to making sure that we're ready for the future. And also taking this time to look at what are the, the, kind of, I've been referring to with our department as, as the machine of, our machine of HR, our machine of finance, our machine of PD, our machine of Public Works to ensuring that we're prioritizing, refining those systems that make our departments most impactful so that when we can get to a place, we are in a place, but when you add so many more residents, we add so many more staff, it puts pressure on your systems. And so leveraging foresight to be, to say, let's go ahead and pressure test this stuff and ensure we're ready to add ten more people, we're ready to add twenty-five more people. We're ready to serve another, you know, three lane miles of people, another two thou, I mean, you know, two thousand people or three hundred rooftops is very, very important. Because we don't want, this kind of goes back to our strategic plan and saying we want growth to happen for us, not to us. And if we are not proactive and we don't operate with foresight when it comes to preparing for those moments, it's something that we could easily be overtaken by our growth and watch the level and quality of our service and customer service like go down. And that's something that I don't want to happen for us. Because our community is very vocal and they are very much used to having a very responsive and timely service on the different things they ask from us on a day to day basis. The others, the other focus thing that we're focused on is just strategic growth. And that's using long-term thinking when it comes to departmental leadership. We've been working through the implementation of our strategic plan over the last year. This year is also a continued implementation of our strategic plan by working to continue to build out and refine our departmental work plans that support our strategic plan. The finding those departmental work plans will also help us when it comes to communicating out about the impact that each one of our departments is having to our community. And so we've been working to get in the habit of that. Also our performance management, syncing up our, looking at and syncing up like as a leadership team on the philosophy we have around our performance management and how we navigate that. It'd be really important. It's something we'll be focused on this year. And then having program, program analysis and data-driven decision-making and also ensuring that we maintain accountability around those things is really, really important. So that kind of, that kind of captures the organizational piece. Another big part of that goal area, another thing I wanted to cover was our, our capital program. Since this is something that we will be spending a lot of money on this upcoming year as far as like debt funding for our town campus and also moving through the completion of our Main Street project. And knowing that once we complete one thing, the net capacity gets pointed towards another thing. And so as we completed the entrance for the farm, now it's like, well, what are we going to do next? And so I wanted to bring that all before you. This model here is something that you are familiar with. This, the, they're set here as far, as far as the, they're set in the different fiscal years according to when we are leveraging or the funding for those things. And so right now in twenty-five, twenty-six, if the campus site, the police station and main fire station are there, the main fire station cost has been updated based on recent decisions from you all and looking at the capacity and the survey from our fire department. I recall that being closer to about twelve, about twelve million dollars. But now it's at, look, just north of fourteen, fourteen-five. And then in twenty-six, twenty-seven, that is where we'll be partnering with Wake County as far as the library with twenty-seven, twenty-eight looking towards the town hall. Granite Falls Bul, Granite Falls Boulevard, which is in that kind of like streets and sidewalk section, that's something that we're thinking about. We're not, we don't have funding for it right now, but there is some fee and loo funds that we've had and retained over the years to go towards connecting that. This is, Granite Falls Boulevard is one of those things we'll be chatting with Wake Med and their camp, their campus as they build that out because that'll be sitting kind of like at that termination point. And we mentioned it in the meeting that we had with them prior to them making the big announcement. So our goal was to, to work with them to see, number one internally after determine what that cross section will be for Granite Falls Boulevard and how, how can they take that into account as they kind of build and connect. And so I, I believe that there is an opportunity for us to move a little bit faster on that. But that will also impact the whole CIP plan model. And so that's something I'll be coming back to you all about once we figure out what the timing is for certain things as far as that campus and, and what funding will take to be able to connect that. I believe that if, also believe that we do need to do some pre-engagement with that community there to ensure that they're in the loop and their voices are taken into account as far as Barrington. But also if we look at, because they said that Granite Falls Boulevard will literally kind of create a cut through for them. And then the other part that I think will be beneficial too is that we would see a decompression of our Main Street if we build out that Granite Falls Boulevard as far as traffic. Right now they come to Granite Falls, they turn and get on Main Street, they can just bypass Main Street to be able to get to Publix and also Egress or Ingress with the town. Yes, sir.
How much of Burlington Mills will we have to expand as well? Because that's a problem today before all this. So that has to be expanded to accommodate any additional traffic. I mean, you can't handle the traffic that there's today because of the middle school.
Right. So the cross section that they have now, so it was restriped to kind of take into account the middle school and that storage lane. Because before how it was currently laid out, there was not a center lane.
Right.
It was just a drag strip. For lack of a better word.
And granted, follows Paul, we'll have to, Michael Paul, we'll have to tie in to the new section.
Right.
It won't go as far up there with the school. It ties in that new section we haven't used yet. The bigger section.
But still, we're still going to have, I mean, we have a problem with Burlington Mills right now. So we have to do something with that as well. I'm with you.
I think that, I think that new section is, is that a four lane?
Five.
Five lane, yeah.
At the intersection on Main Street.
But it's a new intersection, have to go in that new section.
Right.
Somewhere.
Double left and a right, yeah.
Yep, two, two and one, right?
Yeah.
Two right, two left and one straight through.
Two, one, yes. Yeah.
There's a little map in your book somewhere.
But those, those are things we're thinking about. And how we can partner to do that. And so, and I also think it'd be beneficial to them as well to ensure that people can get in and out and not, you know, cause, cause a disturbance or inhibit them to be able to get people in and out as well. And so those are things we were thinking about with the CIP model. And so, those are things we were thinking about with the CIP model. The most important thing is, is that we're going to the LGC this summer with the financial advisor, Davenport. During that time, we'll be sharing the plans and also the funding strategy with them. And so, how we've approached this year as far as trying to tighten down on budget amendments, all those different things and make sure that when we look at our finances, it shows consistency and intentionality has all kind of worked up to this moment to be able to go to them. Because debt funding, that amount of money as a municipality that has the, has the, even though $21 million is a lot for one person or two people, when we look at some of the other communities like, you know, Wake Forest, they're like $140 million.
Yeah.
You know, the ratio between when you look at how much money we want to debt fund for this town campus versus our, our, our year-to-year revenues and operational budget is significant. And so, those smaller things as far as consistency in our year-to-year, month-to-month financial budget administration practices really make a big difference.
I think Hollis Crane said theirs is 118 million.
Yeah.
Which is 100 million more than ours. I got, I got a technical question and it may be Amy's or you maybe answer it. You know, this is, these projects which, add them all up to about $48 million, I think, projects, those four projects. I thought that would be in this budget, you know, as, as money, money, you know, being spent with financing coming in to cover it. Is that technically, is that where I'm at on that, Amy? Because I, I thought we show these things in the budget, but this particular year we're not showing it or what's the answer to that?
Yeah, you're right. Usually, I do roll the, the capital into, you know, part of the annual budget.
Yeah.
But this year, because these projects are so large.
48 million.
Yeah. And because we're still in the planning stage, we're still working with the architect, the construction manager at risk to really nail down those numbers, it just makes sense to wait because they're going to be in their own capital project ordinance anyway, not in the annual budget ordinance. And so, it just makes sense for us to wait and you'll, you'll see that later this year where you'll get the capital budget ordinance that actually appropriates the money once we have some more firm numbers.
So, it'd be like, more like a amendment?
Yeah, yeah. And we, and we do amendments for cap, or, you know, capital project ordinances can really, they can happen anytime because those again, or those are ordinances that don't expire until the project is finished.
Yeah. So, so typically, I always see the capital in the budget.
Yeah.
But because it's so big, you just, it's less messy, I guess.
Yeah, it's a little, it just, you're going to have to do one later to do an amendment, so let's just wait and get it right the first time.
Because really, if you consider that as being real, then our budget is really 60 million dollars, right?
Depends on if you, if you ascribe to Dave Ramsey's methodology or not and is debt income or not. But, I mean, the good thing is, one thing that I like about debt funding, which Amy, you know, she's like, well, you know, we don't really count that, is that right now we, we have high interest rates, right? And so, when you debt fund and you have these cash, this cash sit in your reserves, it increases the amount of revenues you kind of get off interest. And so, I believe that that, even the debt funding will allow us to do some of these one-off things by leveraging the interest we get from the debt we're holding to address things that are like one-off in real time. And so, that's something that I look forward to because like, for instance, the year before last, we were able, because we had, and we got more money in revenues than we thought from interest, we were able to take action on a, that yardway struck earlier, right? Or is it looking at a, a police car, you know, or what have you? And so, those are things that as we look at like the, the whole kind of like financial health and the administration, that's like one of those small kind of benefits from, of debt funding is where you kind of get a little bit more. But you can also just point it back towards paying it down. But, but those are things that we can think about and be kind of like, even though we're restricted and don't have a lot of, I think, innovation, space for innovation within this budget because we're kind of like confined as to how much revenues we have, those are things we can look forward to that can kind of help us pivot and do some things within this item like, I think, when that be the next two, three years of like uncertainty when it comes to the economic ecosystem landscape, so.
We should see some influx from the two commercial projects.
That's correct.
As they come online, get fully occupied.
Yeah, we will. We love seeing new people get added to that top, you know? If we were a ministry, the top givers in commercial taxes. And so, Cobblestone and Wallbrook and Publix, they'll definitely be up there. And also, we have the storage facility that's coming online and storage facilities are the best source of commercial tax dollars known to municipalities when done right because they have low overhead and they, it comes consistently. And so, but those are things to think about as well.
I got a quick question about recreation on here. We have farm activation of 12 million at '25, '26, and we have park expansions in the future at 12, 12 million dollars. I know in the past, we've had earmarks for having a little bit of money in case we run into parkland we need to acquire.
Yes.
Do we have anything within the budget to do that? My biggest concern is we run into something where we need to get something and we just don't have the money for it.
Yeah, so, the parks fees are things that are committed from development and so that kitty kind of grows with our development and it's something that comes as each kind, each new lot or home comes online, that continues to grow in this money, money that we're reserved for those purposes. And so, we don't budget for that, but that allows, but we know that those funds are there. I think it's like about 2, 2.3 or something like that right now, roughly. But we've, but we've, what we've been doing is strategically leveraging that to, it's there for future purchases, but also leveraging that to be the source of the match money in like, for instance, Millbridge Park, we'll pay that down, we'll pay for that, but then we'll be reimbursed. And so, how do we match the grants that we get for that as well? But that's something that, that resource is there and it's earmarked and it's, it's, those are monies that we can use for anything else as well.
Thank you.
Projects in, projects that are in progress, town campus site development.
Before you get going in that, this may be a good time. We've been going a little over two hours, so let's take a 10-minute.
Okay.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Let's take a 10-minute. You catch your breath. You've been going quite a while. Let's, let's meet back at five till.
Only have two slides left.
Huh?
Only have two slides left if you want me to put a button on it.
What do you think? Yeah, cool. Yeah, okay. All right, finish it up then if you feel like.
Yeah, five minutes.
Yeah, so, projects in progress, town campus site development, police station, main fire station, that's, those are, those, those are budgeted for the associated engineering fees and site development fees with that. And then also, the 24 million dollars for the Main Street lap project. Then, in parks and recreation, we have the, the farm park, park activation in Granite Acres Greenway and then Millbridge Amphitheater. And so, those are the projects that are currently in progress at some, and at some, at one phase or another within the project. That concludes my budget presentation.
All right. I tell you what then, let's take the break. You guys, y'all got some questions? We'll come back, ask you questions, give you plenty of time to answer any questions we have on the budget. And then after that, we'll wrap the budget up for the work session.
Awesome.
And we'll get, we'll get some ideas on next steps to after the questions. Everybody good with that? Everybody good? All right. Still 10 minutes then. So, it'll be five till with that clock there. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we are coming out of recess. Thank you Eric for that presentation. Good job. Thank Amy for sure. The board may have a few questions, so let's go through that first and see if any questions for the manager or Amy either one. I see Amy's here to answer questions too. Any questions from the board?
I have one question. The savings that were... The savings we had from the public waste truck that we bought, yard waste truck that we bought. How much savings was that for us to purchase that truck as opposed to the services that we paid for? Or is the savings going to be realized over the years?
I think when our... Eric Glasser was here. He did about a... It's like a four-year recoup. Ms. Amy, you can come up. I mean, Ms. Tammy, you can come up. Yes, there's a cost recovery on it. I think it'll be ten years. Ms. Tam, feel free to introduce. I think this is your first time.
This is my first board meeting. Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Eric Glasser did a cost recovery and when he did that cost recovery, we would actually break even after year three of having that truck from the cost savings of bringing it in-house.
Okay, and so there's another truck that you said that we're getting ready to have to buy.
Correct.
That one is the compactor truck.
Yes.
So eventually in next year's budget, hopefully, we will be able to bring in the carts and get the lift with, kind of like the trash people do now. And with that, with every resident having those carts, they will be able to have more capacity and that compactor truck will put more stuff in it to take to the landfill, which will save us money on the tipping fees.
Okay. You said next year?
Mm-hmm. And well, year after next budget.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for the financial team? So what's next steps?
Next steps is on the June 3 business meeting, there'll be a public hearing on the budget. And so for those community members who have either been here in person or watched the presentation, feel free to come in and ask questions as far as that. And the budget has to be adopted by July 1 according to North Carolina general statutes. And so that will afford the opportunity for you all. So public hearing on June 3. The second meeting of June, the work session is on 17th. As opportunity if the public hearing needed to be continued or there was a decision that needed to be made as well. But you all at any time, given your questions being answered or the public's questions being answered can adopt the proposed budget as well. And so in between now and the next public hearing, feel free to reach out. If I need to have meetings with you all as a group or as individuals, with the budget committee or with a staff member or department head or what have you, feel free to reach out to get your questions answered. And we'll be sure to communicate about any questions that you all have from those meetings out to the community and show that we answer those things with it, so.
When did you or did you say it'll be on the website?
It'd be available on the website first thing in the morning. If not, 5:00 PM today. I think it's up there. I think it went up at 5:00 PM today. And so it's up for the proposed budget and the presentation or should be up.
Sounds good. Any other thing from the board? All right. Well, thanks a lot. Now we're going to get a Main Street project update from Eric and then we will go into the last item on agenda.
So while Josh gets queued up, I wanted to just kind of give a brief little recap. Since in our last board meeting, which was on two weeks ago, the business meeting, first business meeting of this month, it was Small Business Week recognition and a lot of the business owners and community members came in and had expressed their concerns about the Main Street project. From the conversations and concerns they expressed, you all as a board wanted to revisit some of the decisions that had been made with the project as far as the, more specifically, the total closure of the intersection. Since that Tuesday night meeting, we had several meetings with the business owners, the community, Fred Smith's company, with you all, with not you all in total, but the mayor, Commissioner Austin, the Commissioner Michael Paul, and had open conversations with small businesses, residents that live within the community in general and residents that live in proximity to the project. And the decision that had came from those meetings is to stay the course as far as keeping the temporary Main Street being open path and committing to that. And but more importantly, committing to, as we have already done, to being able to accelerate that timeline. Justin would give updates and kind of give those milestones, but to recap, the anticipated by continuing with Main Street being open, date of the opening of the intersection was going to, was in early, mid-October. But as a result of good weather and being able to expedite things, that date is anticipated to be early September. If we were, would have closed the intersection, would have happened earlier, closer to early July, but it was determined from the conversation with the small business owners, residents and the people that live in the immediate area, that the implications of that would be too great as far as the businesses, the impact on local traffic and a number of other things. And so that option to kind of pivot back, it's not something that we will be doing. We'll be moving forward with this, the current path that will be kind of captured in the update that Josh, Ben and Mehmet will be giving. And then we'll be able, we'll also answer any questions that you have for that. Also, in recent meetings, you all had requested that Fred Smith's company be present for the presentation. They informed us about five minutes before his meeting start. I didn't find out that they would not be coming. And so that was a surprise to me because it was communicated to me, all of us, and even on the phone, they said yes. And they will have, if it's not a project manager, but a communication person here, to kind of talk to that. And they also said it in last Friday's project update meeting when we asked them for that. And so we'll be following up with them for that, but I'll also be ready to relay any questions that you all have that we can't answer to that around capacity, timing and intentionality around some of your questions and executing and accelerating the project. And so we'll definitely relay any sentiment y'all have with regards to that to them. I know that some of you, specifically Commissioner Michael Paul and Commissioner Austin and the mayor, you all were, received a contact information as well. And so if we need to set up meetings, we will to talk through any of your questions verbally. But our goal tonight was to have every kind of member of the project team. I know that we have, I've been here and Josh and RKK and here and Melvin and the engineering team and Mehmet, we've always been here for these updates and they've been the missing party. And so we'll be giving an update on that. Do you have any questions about the decision or anything? I know, or did either of you want to share about the sentiment y'all had kind of heard from the community to ask why we kind of stayed on this particular path before we jump into the project update?
No. From what we've seen this week so far and kind of tonight and them not showing up, what's the danger of them just pulling out? Or is there a danger?
The danger of what?
Just don't come back?
Who?
Fred Smith.
Oh, no. No, no, no. I'm talking about any comments around what you've heard from the community members as to why we chose not to close the intersection.
Is it any danger of that though?
No.
Is any danger they're not going to?
No.
Do the job?
No.
They're not coming and working, so I'm just wondering.
So I want to add something to this because I'm kind of pissed about this already. And I was, I was going to save this for the end, but I actually looked up Fred Smith's company of 1,200 employees. They were actually acquired by Construction Partners Incorporated in 2011.
Yeah, CPI.
They have sister companies in North Carolina, South Carolina and Georgia. So do we need to have somebody from CPI come get their boy and put this together right? Or, I mean, I just can't stand no representation at all here for this.
It's my understanding that the son of the owner is the president of CPI right now and that he still resides in the region and is very engaged in their operations.
Wow, this is just the worst thing I've ever seen, actually, honestly.
Looks terrible because we had several meetings, as all of us know, there was great sentiment that we need to get this done. We had a decision made with our town businesses and we respect them and we listen to them and we agreed to keep the one lane of Main Street open, but it was imperative that we get this done on or before the middle of September with that caveat. And we had a beautiful weekend, we had a beautiful day, and there was no one there all weekend, there was no one there this morning when I went through there about 9:40, and they're not here. So I don't take them very seriously. They got real upset when we talked about their character and they have done absolutely nothing to improve it. So I'm not a fan of Fred Smith right now because they haven't shown me anything that they're committed to this project to getting it done.
And this is the problem with lowest and most responsible bidder.
Yes, sir.
It's garbage because this is what you get.
Not acceptable.
Right.
And that needs to be passed on to Fred Smith and let him know that we're not happy, we're not a happy customer because they're not doing their side of this.
Some of the thing that the businesses was expressing was that they saw movement on Thursday and Friday. They saw all hands on deck.
Right.
And they were very happy, but also there was like, this is too good to be true. How long is this going to last? So Monday, I drove back through there and I saw minimum crew, but today I saw nothing. Now, I understand that once you dig up, that you have to get involved with DOT, but how long does that really take for them to make a decision so we can still have dirt moving?
And so what, one thing that I had communicated, had we talked about in last Thursday's meeting was when we had the traffic management plan, that was, so the current layout, this is something, I'm not trying to steal their thunder, is in order to get the work done now, since there's two lanes, one going each, one going either direction, north to south, going to be narrowing it down to one lane to be able to complete, be able to mobilize, complete the work on that west side of the street. And so there's a traffic management plan that we proposed to DOT that they brought back a comment that would have resulted in the loss of access to that temporary parking lot. And that's, that's a comment they gave us on Monday of last week. Once I received it, I went back to them, brought to them an idea that will leave it open and they agreed to it verbally. And so that traffic management plan went back for comment and we hope to have a, Stan Tech, our engineering firm, updated the design to address the comments, propose the way in which you can have that, I'm trying to talk faster, that temporary parking lot open. And that updated plan had to go back to DOT for approval. And so if Fred Smith was here to communicate it, it would probably sound way better than coming from me, but that traffic management plan that we, that was supposed to come back early last week to allow them to mobilize, to kind of move to the next phase of narrowing the road down and kind of digging into the work, the earthwork on the West Young side, we had to, we ended up having another additional week of approvals for it because of some comments that came back from DOT. Right? And so is there a valid reason for that, you know, for them not to be working because they can't mobilize to do that without that approved, like stamped by engineer plan? Yes. But that's because we're at a place in the project where you kind of have to narrow it to get the work done. And we kind of froze all the work to be able to know, are we going to close the whole intersection or not to last Thursday? And so that impacted some of the progress, but you, you all are correct that they did mobilize on last Thursday and Friday. And they will be mobilizing to do the stormwater on William Street, what, tomorrow?
Tomorrow, Thursday.
Tomorrow and Thursday as well. As far as Monday, I don't know. That's what impacted Monday today. The focus was largely on getting the signal activated for the opening of the Publix. And they did work along the corridor on that multi-use path and also needed to move forward, which is part of the completion of the West Young side, the abandonment of the, the banning of the well they had uncovered there near Cobblestone. And so that abandonment, did they complete the abandonment today? Of course, yeah, they completed the abandonment today. And so that's part of working on that side, but this sort of sounded way better coming from them than me.
So is the same crew that's doing that up there at Young and Main is doing Publix? It's just one crew bouncing back?
Yeah, both guys. So there is three. There's three crews today. There's the signal, there's the signal, the side path, the signal, the side path from, that comes from kind of like Walbrook up to Main Street and then the abandonment of the well. Those are three crews.
But see, what's, I guess what's frustrating everybody, especially on this board, is, you know, Josh, you said they're coming in tomorrow. I have no faith that they will, but they're coming in tomorrow to work on, on that sewer, I mean, stormwater up on William Street. Why wasn't he working on that last two days?
Right.
You know?
The last three.
That's a question that we could have asked him.
West Young, East Young, I mean, we got Main Street. Plenty of work to be done on both of those. There's 80 or 90 sections of storm drains sitting there waiting, it's been there for a couple of months. The front of my office, yeah, there was a guy that showed up at 3:30 this afternoon in a small cat to roll over some dirt for 10 minutes, but that's not a crew to my counting or my understanding. So no, I'm not happy with them. They haven't shown me that they're able to do anything on a timely basis and I don't believe the mid-September deadline right now and no one else should. They haven't proved anything to anybody. So no, they're not sitting very well in our books right now. And they're not even here when they promised they would be. So again, you know, they got about four strikes against them.
Yep.
So I can say for William Street?
Come up, Josh. Everybody knows you, I think, oh, are you going to do a little update for them?
Yeah.
You can, you can. I just wanted to give an explanation about William Street real quick.
Yeah.
We were waiting on Inbridge to relocate some gas services that were impacted by the design that were found and they were finished earlier this week. They were finished earlier this week and part of the work that's going to happen later this week is that they're going to do some clearing along William Street so that they can finish installing the storm drain. They have to start at the back end and work their way up.
So they're going to go from William Street into Main Street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because they dug up part of Main Street, but they haven't reached Williams yet.
Some of that was potholing, looking for existing services.
Okay, okay.
And some of that was the gas line relocations as well.
And last week, we were told that everything was done, every ounce of dirt's been dug up, there's nothing anywhere to be anywhere concerned about, that all we got to do is turn and burn and put a new road in.
Correct.
That was what we were told twice last week.
Correct.
So again, how can we trust them or believe them?
Yeah.
Because I don't. Because they haven't told us everything that we should have been told.
Right, I understand.
I know that's just...
It's not your fault. I mean, we're not, you know, we're kind of beating up the messenger a little bit.
Well, hopefully the message gets to who needs to hear it.
Like last time I sent them the link and so they are, I sent them the link of the last meeting for them to watch because it was too much for me to communicate. And I have no doubt that they'll be doing that as well, so.
Yeah, they don't communicate at all no more, so.
I hope we are, we haven't paid for more than what they've done so far on the project.
Yes, sir. They get paid by the work that they do and they're a month lag before we even start working on quantities.
I hope other municipalities are looking at this. That's what I hope.
What'd you say, Paul?
I hope other towns, municipalities are looking at this.
At what?
They're looking at what's happening here. Because they, I wouldn't want, yeah, it's unacceptable.
Yeah. Well, this was a DOT hire, right? I mean, DOT reviewed the contracts and approved them?
It was, I mean, it was a joint review, but...
Yeah. Because you had to, I thought we had to, they had a select number of contractors we had to use, we couldn't use.
Yes. It has to be pre-approved through DOT, yeah. And so we, they are on their pre-approved contractor list with DOT. We can, so would like to provide an update?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Not, not really, not unless you know when they're going to start. Not, not really, not unless you know when they're gonna start and what their plans are.
I was gonna.
And when should we expect them up there and when we shouldn't?
It changes every day.
Yeah, I mean, if you're just gonna give your hopeful knowledge that they're gonna be there, I mean, I, I don't know if we need that update or not.
Yeah, we, and we need a, a schedule. We need to know when they're gonna be here from now until it's done, when they're gonna be here, what they're gonna do. And we can check them off and say, yeah, you're ahead scheduled, you're behind scheduled. Cause we're not gonna have days like this every day for the next four months. We're gonna have weather and if it were me, I'd wanna get ahead of schedule so that I have a little bit in reserves in case we did get bad weather, which we will. So, again, they're not helping themselves at all.
And how many more iterations of DOT involvement are we talking about? You know, along for the remainder of the project? Can we define that as well?
Um, sure.
What was the question?
Essentially, the, essentially this is a locally administered, um, project. And so they are, DOT is here every step of the way.
But we're managing it.
Hmm?
We're, we're managing.
We're managing it, yes. And so, um, when we have to, when we get a comment, it has to go back into um, their system or what have you. The initial comment always takes longer, but the addressing of the comments goes faster. So if it takes three days to get the initial response, typically if you respond, it's like much quicker.
Yeah, as, you know, as, as bad as Fred Smith has been, I'm gonna just say they've been pretty bad. As bad as they've been, DOT hadn't made it any faster though.
That was my question essentially.
Yeah, I think that, you know, they're, they're slowing themselves in approving things and returning, you know, getting back with you. I mean, we just saw the, we just saw this week, DOT was supposed to be out here yesterday. They were scheduled to be out here, right?
Yes, and did not.
They were scheduled to be out here yesterday to verify the lights down at Publix, give the go-ahead, turn them on, and they was a no-show. They was a no-show. So DOT is not completely, you know,
Innocent.
Innocent is the prob- uh, maybe a different word than innocent. But, but, uh, but being it's a DOT project makes it a little much more difficult.
Right.
And speed-wise.
But in full transparency, the, the spots for stripes of DOT has not changed over the last fifteen, twenty years. And so, that's why you have to be proactive, you have to submit your stuff early, you have to communicate early. Going to DOT and, um, and saying we need this tomorrow never happens. Unless, unless you do like we had to do today, which is, send an email or call everybody from in the upline. But you don't get but so many matches in the matchbook. As far as routine approvals, you know it's not gonna be overnight. Everybody knows that, everybody that works in this state knows that. And so, yes, they have not been super expedient, but they have also never been super expedient.
Never what?
Yes, DOT has not been super fast, but they have also never been super fast. And it's different to where we didn't know.
Very consistent.
Right, cause they're a machine, right? And so.
You know, at the end of the day, even though they're not fast, they support the project, fund the project.
And there should be, there should be a way, and this is something we've been working with the, the managers. We have a, um, a group of regional managers, it's, it's actually led by, um, the manager of Holly Springs, Randy Harrington, and engaging Division Five on how do we get, how can we escalate certain issues as municipalities when we're executing locally administered projects? Because we get thrown into the same bucket as, um, contractors and developers and, um, and representatives. Um, even in some of the language you see in the, the email that I sent today, which says, look, we don't move fast for contractors. I'm like, this is not a request from a contractor, this is a request from the town of Roseville. And that, the inability for certain things to be caught, um, and move quicker, um, given the impact of that and how it impacts like even like the ribbon cutting for a Publix, that's very important. And those are things that they should be able to respond to. And so, we're working on that as a region, but this is a problem that we continue to have. It doesn't help that they have a lot of turnover and they have a lot of vacancies and a lot of their talent's getting poached by the private, private sector right now.
Yeah, but those aren't.
And so, but those are not issues for us, that's something they gotta solve themselves, that's, yep.
Any, any, any encouragement you can give us in closing?
So with the work starting this week for William Street, um, there probably will be no work over the weekend from Memorial Day weekend. It's a DOT holiday.
That's not encouraging.
They'll be back, they'll be back Tuesday. And they should be starting on William Street, working back towards Main Street. And then once we get the approval from DOT for the change to one lane, which we had to run it through DOT because it's a change from the original plans, it's a DOT roadway and it's a safety issue. So we have to make sure that everything is good with their methods. And they should be starting on the West Young side as soon as that's approved. Once they, uh, acquire the new portable signals, install them, they should be starting.
They don't have the portable signals yet?
They're waiting to get them from their business. They've al- they've already submitted them, their paperwork, and they're just waiting to get them, because those aren't a keep-on-the-line type of item.
So, when can we get a schedule from Fred Smith to show us how they're gonna get this done by September fourteenth? And can we all get a copy?
We have a schedule from March, um.
That's out of date.
I, I know, we will talk to them first thing in the morning, get an updated schedule to track them, thank you.
Is there any expected delivery date on the equipment?
I have not heard that yet.
That's a concern I have too. Is it gonna be delayed and if so, how long? That's, that's a big concern right there.
Maybe we should borrow from Cardinal, I feel like they can get anything. Cardinal goes out here and puts a rodent for us and they're done ahead of time, that's okay.
I'd go to Amazon.
It's there, it's there.
Well, thank y'all for showing up tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, we're not be, we're not trying to beat up the mess, it's frustrating.
We understand.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, thank you guys. You know, I, I don't expect them to be there Tuesday, if they do, at all. I mean, I, I have no faith in them.
That's sad and unacceptable.
Yep. All right. Next item is a closed session request by the attorney. Um, do I have anybody with that motion?
Move to enter closed session pursuant to NCGS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, A six personnel matter.
Okay, we got a, um, a motion to adjourn in a closed session, is that a second?
Second.
Here in a second, um, is any other discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like the ayes have it, ayes do have it, and we will adjourn in closed session. Thanks, everybody, we will be back after this executive session, thank you.
Okay, welcome back, Rosa. We just had a brief recess in this closed session discussing some personnel issues. I do want to remind everybody tomorrow morning, 6:30, get up right and early because I think at 6:45 we're going to do the ribbon cutting of the brand-new Publix. So, pretty excited about that. Hope everybody gets up right and early and come out to that. If not, get up and come out there at lunchtime. There'd be some people there, I imagine, still by then at the grocery store. Was anything anybody want to talk about before we adjourn? Eric, you got anything? No? How about Madam Clerk? Anything from you?
Yes, I just wanted to share that on Thursday afternoon, the military banners will be on display for everyone, just to give you a heads-up on that.
Thank you.
I will be emailing all of the veterans that participated this year and let them know that their banners will be on display.
Okay.
Director of the Minister Mayor, I do have a subject that we'd like to discuss will be the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Ms. Christine Clerk, for that information. I think we're looking for clarity on the budget amounts and information that needs to be shared going forth. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
So, with regards to the Chamber, we had myself, the Town Attorney, Michael McFarland, and our Finance Director, Amy Stevens, had a meeting with them last week to talk through the memorandum of understanding. We're in a kind of like an interesting situation in which as we unify with the Fire Department, the Chamber is currently housed in a building that's owned by the Fire Department. And so, the idea of them paying rent for that building when we already contribute money to them creates a thing where like, essentially, what do we, how do we clarify the memorandum of understanding to take into account that we're giving them money, but they're also giving money back, which kind of creates a wash? And so, how do we work with them to determine that net amount? As far as our contribution, I think it's in all of ours, I think all of our desire is for us to continue to support our Chamber and to have them in a, ensure that they're in a situation where they can operate, have the need of funding to operate as far as operations. I mean, the function as far as the operations, the recommendation that's included in the budget as far as the funding for the Chamber and would likely be, will be reflected in an MOU that will come before you all is us contributing $10,000 to the Chamber. That $10,000 will be specifically pointed towards two programs. $5,000 goes towards Launch Roseville. The other $5,000 goes towards Youth Leadership Roseville, which is the youth program that some of you have participated in the Government Day. And so, but, and then the remainder of the funding that we would contribute to them will be essentially the net amount between what the lease amount would be and like what the, what additional credit or grant needs to be given to them, an amount of additional money to reflect what their operational costs are or the funding they need to be able to operate. It sounds more complex than it is, but our conversation with them, essentially, we kind of landed at the end of that conversation on them being able, asking them to get back to me as far as what is the funding that they need operations-wise for us, from us as a town, for them to be able to stand up and continue to operate as a Chamber that we normally partner with. But also, due to how we're continuing to refine how we're spending our government money on programming, we've moved our funding as far as programming-wise away from the events such as the bands, barbecuing bands, and also the golf tournament. And making sure that those funding that we commit to them as far as program goes towards something that qualifies as something that meets, provides a service that we will provide as a local government entity if we were to have that thing internal. And so, those two things are the business development through Launch Roseville and Youth Leadership Roseville. And so, that's what, that's the source of the decision around those, funding those two events. And I think they had originally asked for about $3,000 for one or of each of them, and so, upping that to $5,000 to show our continued desire to see those programs grow and evolve. And so, that's, that's what we discussed in the meeting with them, and I've been waiting for response from them on that. I asked them to get back to me at the top, at the end of that meeting, and I had not heard back. And so, the proposed budget and contributions towards that are what, are reflected in the proposed budget. It's been brought to my attention that there has been like some other conversations, possibly it has not been with me, but we do have an upcoming meeting with them on tomorrow and, and on Thursday to try to work through what those is, those things are. And that'd be something that I'll have to communicate with you all about between now and the next meeting, the next, the business meeting of June. And so, that's something that you all can look forward to me from, via email. But I didn't know if you all had any concerns or had any questions about it. There might be a few other things like as far as that MOU that will be included or dynamics that need to be worked out. But that's essentially the information I kind of have to share in regards to the proposed funding for the Chamber.
So, from a clarity perspective, $10,000 does not include the remaining lease amount for the year?
So, that's a credit. And so, it didn't, it doesn't administrate, like financial administration-wise, like paying bills, it's like, it doesn't make sense for us to send you money for you to send it straight back.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Right, and...
That's the balance sheet.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
The balance sheet. And so, do have to work with them, determine what is that net amount that needs to be contributed. Our past contributions to the Chamber, none of the line items that were in the money that we provided them were explicitly committed to operations. They were all towards certain social, business engagement, business after hours events. And I'm not sure how that kind of impacts their financial situation because we don't have, we're not privy to their books or how they navigate those different things. So, we don't know what their operational costs are. But a discussion with them to see how much they need from us to kind of close the gap between their member fees, because I do know in their presentation that their membership has kind of gone down as they kind of refine or niche down. Figure out what that gap is between what their membership fees covers versus what they need from us to be able to, I think the metaphor I used at the end of the meeting was, pun intended since Mr. Kim was there, was that we want to make sure that they're swimming and not fighting water when it comes to continuing to move forward. And so, what is that, what is that place of balance as far as our contribution to them to allow them to be able to swim as a, as a Chamber and continue to serve our business community and not, not be drowning or be underwater?
Ms. Your question, Limwood?
That it did. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? All right. Any closing comments? All right. Unless someone has opposition, not hearing any, I'm going to close the meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned.